Hello, we're going to call the meeting to order for the Do you have an agenda? For the July 21 Planning Commission meeting. First thing will be called to order. And roll call. Newton.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Fragoso.
Here.
Ackerman.
Gonzalez Parver.
Here.
Chair Kirline.
Here.
Yeah, I think at the beginning, when they first say approval of the agenda, you say you move everything off.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to recommend that we pull all the items from consent and continuum to August. We've had a procedural glitch in the way they were noticed, and we'd like to correct that, and we'd also like to give the town attorney time to review them also, which she did not have because of the extensive work that went into the ordinance before you tonight. So, I didn't want to wait for the consent calendar, I wanted to alert anybody that's here. I think we've contacted all those folks. But, we recommend pulling all the consent items, all three, and continuum to August, and we will re-notice them to the public. So, that would be our recommendation for changing the agenda.
Through the chair. Would it be appropriate to ask a question about one or two of these consent items, or should I just, why don't I let it go?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm afraid it isn't. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess that only leaves one, there'll only be one public item here. So, if anyone is here for the first three consent items on the calendar, those have been, well, we haven't voted yet, but
Recommended.
So, anyway, so that's recommended, but I guess we do need to make a motion and prove the agenda.
I saw.
You would be approving the agenda with removing the consent items.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 You oppose? No? Okay, so if there's anyone who is here for those, the three items that were listed, those have been continued to the August meeting. And, so I guess that, the next item would be public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on something that's not listed on the agenda?
Hi, Pam Meggs, 310 Cypress Drive, former chair of the Planning Commission. The Cascade Canyon had a fire recently, and it actually incurred planes. And, you know, I was here to the beginning of the general plan, and all throughout the plan, that was one area that I spoke up about. I'm a nurse, and I'm, you know, we live in a severe firestorm area in the Cascade Canyon, but there's other places in Fairfax. I emailed the mayor, no response. I still have, I've asked recently, is there a firestorm evacuation plan? I looked through the general plan about four times today. It references an ongoing issue, or it should have been done, it looks like a year after the general plan was finished, was in 2012. So, I'm pretty upset about this. That four years have gone by, there's no education, there is nothing. So, I want to ask if the Planning Commission could bring that to the council, I'll also go to council. But, you know, I live midway in the Cascade Canyon, I haven't a clue on any way to get out, or where to go, I don't even know where a general station would be, I'm assuming down here. But, if you all remember the Oakland Hills fire, I really don't want to see this happen to Fairfax, and there'll be a nasty disaster for many lives to be lost. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on something that's not posted on the agenda? Okay, thank you. So
Madam Chair. May I make a comment on that last comment from the public? Is that appropriate?
Actually, technically, we're not supposed to discuss public comment items.
Well, it's a piece of information.
Then that's fine.
Okay. I live on a road similar to Cascade Canyon, where it's like a dead end at the, and there's a fire danger, and the fire department will come out and look at the area and schedule a meeting with you. We had this done in our area, and so that's just a piece of information.
Okay, so we're ready to, for the public hearing item.
Oh, Madam Chair, you might want to indicate that we've changed the agenda to articulate that people normally get three minutes to speak, but if they're here representing a larger group, they can have five minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you.
And if you're ready for the staff report on the CH to CC, I can begin that.
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm going to just lead us into this, and then Katie Wazinski, our deputy town attorney, is here to carry us through the majority of the report and the changes that are being presented tonight that you all have been weighing in on. So, by way of background, in April 2012, the town council adopted the 2010 to 2030 general plan, which along with a update to the housing element in there, that was done last year, that document, the blueprint for the town dictates certain zoning amendments to be made in order to realize policies and objectives of the town with respect to further development of the town's retail heart and the provision for housing. Included amongst these directives is to direct to central commercial, CC, and make certain modifications to the uses that are permitted in the then combined central commercial zone. The draft zoning ordinance before you tonight represents the implementation of some of those policies and objectives within the central commercial zoning district. Staff asked the Planning Commission to consider recommending the town council adopt the ordinance and make associated SEQA, or California Environmental Quality Act, findings. So, to start our discussion, over the last, past several months, the Planning Commission and the town council have hosted a number of public meetings to consider how to carry out the general plan's directive to rezone all CH, highway commercial parcels, to CC, central commercial, and rezone the CC to implement the policy directives in the general plan. These meetings have included, last October of 2015, the town council held a third general plan forum to consider policy considerations and the process for rezoning CH parcels to CC. The event drew many participants and provided direction to staff as we began drafting a comprehensive zoning, rezoning ordinance. In November, November 18 of last year, the Planning Commission held a follow-up to the town council's October meeting, discussing residential unit sizes, the parking requirements for the CC district. In January 21 of this year, the Planning Commission continued their discussion on residential unit sizes, affordability measures, parking requirements, and the uses to be included in the CC central commercial district. Due to the length of the meeting, it was scheduled for February to continue that discussion, and on February 25, at a special meeting, the Planning Commission met and considered the uses that should be permitted and conditionally permitted in the central commercial district. On April 28 of this year, the Planning Commission once again met and held an extensive discussion as to the format of the CC districts and the uses that should be included in that district. Further direction was provided to staff for amendments to the draft ordinance. And, May 26 of this year, the Planning Commission held a further meeting to refine definitions, discuss use locations, and seek additional information. Tonight, after many months of drafting, revision, and study, again, the Planning Commission is being asked to review draft document before you, and if you feel comfortable, recommend to the town council the adoption of the proposed ordinance rezoning all CH parcels to CC and amending the permitted and conditionally uses, conditionally uses, permitted uses within the central commercial district accordingly. And in a moment, Katie's going to chime in with the highlight section of the report, but I just want to stand back for a moment and just give a brief sort of bird's eye view of what's going on and an overview of the intent behind the policies, as I understand them, that came from the town and are before you tonight. On the screen behind me is the current zoning map for the town. And if you notice here, the CC is the heart of town, that represents sort of the axes of Broadway and Sir Francis Drake and Bolinas. If you were looking at an aerial photo, it would be the fine-grained area of town, where the buildings come up to the street, smaller lots upstairs, many of them, about half the buildings have housing upstairs now. The highway commercial, which I call the bookends of town, are down at the Fair and Selman, and then starting at the old Good Earth and going up past the Little Strip Center, up to the little, sorry, past the Fairfax Market, up to Little Strip Center. So, those bookends, where you see CH on either end of the CC, are what is before the Planning Commission tonight to convert to central commercial. The idea behind this grew out of the General Plan Advisory Committee, and it was to go away from autocentric planning, monolithic buildings and parking lagoos, back to a more fine-grained, small storefront, pedestrian-oriented village character. Okay? So, that's the overall intent. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Katie. Sorry, you have to.
Can you hear me? Is that working? Super. All right, so first of all, thank you so much for coming tonight. I know how many hours you have all put in with this, and I really appreciate. Oh, can you hear? All right. I appreciate all of the time you've given this. So, you should have, in your packet, a staff report, a revised ordinance, a resolution that you could use to recommend adoption of the ordinance, a table of comparative uses that shows what has become of each and every individually enumerated use from the CC and CH districts, and the SEQA memo that we put together to analyze the SEQA impacts of the proposed ordinance. So, does everyone have those? Because we're going to need them all. So, as Jim mentioned, tonight is one more step in a many months-long process, and as you know, we have been making changes to the proposed ordinance as we have gone through each of our study sessions together. And so, tonight, we finally have a final ordinance to consider, and I will pull that up so we can walk through it together. I was so sorry to have to miss the last meeting with you, but I watched the video very carefully and picked up your direction from it, and you'll have only me to blame if there are errors in transcribing your direction. Sometimes the microphones cut out, sometimes it was a little hard to hear. So, there may be a few changes to make as we go tonight, and I'm happy to take that direction as we walk through it. So, Madam Chair, I will leave it to you to tell us whether or not you would all like to walk through the ordinance page by page, or whether you'd like me to give you an overview of what we've done with the ordinance. What would be the pleasure of the commission?
Well, I think maybe you could just highlight, and then if commissioners have specific items that they noticed weren't as they remembered, or whatever, they can ask specific questions. But, I would like to try to keep the, you know, the meeting moving, and there's, it looks like there may be public who want to comment, and so I'd like to, you know, try to facilitate everyone be allowed to participate.
That sounds great. So, if that's all right with the commission, what I'll do then is just give a brief overview of the ordinance, so that the people who haven't spent as much time with it as you all have can have some sense of how we've put this all together, and then I'll be happy to take any questions. So, the ordinance itself, which I'll pull out here, accomplishes two things. Number one, it rezones all parcels that are currently zoned CH to CC per the general plan's direction, and then it takes the uses that are allowed and conditionally allowed in this new revised CC district and amends them to incorporate some of the old uses that were allowed in the CH, and to address some of the uses that state law requires us to handle in a certain way. Now, as you know, most of the town code is written so that individually enumerated uses are listed for each zoning district. And by that I mean, the permitted uses and the conditionally permitted uses are very finely described. You can have a candy store, but you can't have a chocolate shop. You can have a bakery, but you can't have a cafe. We have moved away, in this ordinance, from that individually enumerated use system to adopting a system of use classifications, so we can talk more broadly about these uses. So, now we have retail uses, and manufacturing uses, and residential uses, and we've given new definitions to each of those, so we can incorporate them as we like. So, the ordinance starts with a few revisions. In Sections 1, for example, it removes a reference to the CH district that will no longer be applicable, since the CH district will cease to exist. Section 2 deletes some existing use definitions from the town code, and we can talk about those individual definitions if you like, but on the whole, they are being deleted because they are either duplicative of the new use classifications that we have adopted, that we have considered adopting, or they are outdated or otherwise unneeded. Section 3 adopts the new system of use classifications. So, that's bundling these uses into larger groups. So, animal sales, catering services, eating and drinking establishments, home improvement. These types of uses are all described more generally, so that we don't have the constant battle of determining whether or not a proposed use falls within one of the very few enumerated uses, but rather is a part of a body of greater use classifications. And we've spent quite a bit of time talking about those definitions. I would particularly call to your attention the residential use definitions, which we have talked about extensively in our workshops, and you'll notice that some of the titles look a little different than the last draft you saw. And that was because after reviewing your last workshop, it occurred to me that some of the things that really garnered most of the attention were items that really are handled by state law, and rather than have definitions that would be idiosyncratic to us, it would perhaps just be more useful to follow the state law categories, so then we know where we are bound and what sort of flexibility we have. And the flexibility that we have or don't have for the residential uses is explained in the staff report that came with the packet, and we can talk about that if you have any questions. So, from there, we move on, and the most noticeably new portion of the ordinance is the use table that's set out in Section 13. And this looks different than the remainder of the town code, and that's because it's that move away from the individually enumerated uses to the system of use classifications. And that table gives all readers the information as to whether or not a given use classification is permitted by right, permitted with a conditional use permit, or not permitted at all. And as you know, we've also set up a system of limitations and additional use regulations that more finely deal with some of these uses, so that we can make sure they don't have impacts that we don't want for the town. We can talk about any of those uses, if you would like. And then the final few sections, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18, are cleanups that reflect the work that we've addressed previously, and we conclude with our SEQA discussion. So, if there are particular questions you'd like to ask, I'm happy to hear them. I know that the residential uses did get quite a bit of questions at the last meeting, so if there are questions about that, I'm ready for whatever you got.
Katie, would you like to hit any of the bullets on the highlights?
Oh, sure.
Particularly the, next to the last.
Thank you, Jim. So, the second page of the staff report sort of gives the 30,000-foot view of the ordinance, and as I mentioned, it rezones, the ordinance rezones, parcels from CH to CC. It gets rid of those extra CH references in the code that will no longer be applicable. It adopts that system of use classifications, rather than the individually listed uses. It gets rid of old outdated zoning definitions and adopts new ones. It brings the town into conformance with state law requirements for the manner in which we address particular residential uses, things such as supportive and transitional housing, direction that we've had in the general plan since it was adopted, and we are just now implementing, so that's a good thing. It deletes some zoning language about how lot splits are treated, and we can discuss that. It amends the parking requirements, and it does, in fact, impose a maximum density of 4.5 dwelling units per acre on the residential uses, to make sure that there is not a proliferation of housing that is unintended as a result of the adoption of this ordinance. That 4.5 dwelling unit per acre cap will put a lid on the number of units that can be developed on any given lot. So, that's an important addition, and I know it might be somewhat difficult to locate, but if you're looking at a copy of your ordinance, that is included as an additional regulation, letter E. And you'll see that that letter E appears next to all of the permitted residential uses, to indicate that that 4.5 maximum applies to all residential uses. So, I'm happy to take any questions.
Is the A and B section of the table in Section 13 defined? Oh, yeah, okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. I have that.
I have a question through the chair. On page 16 of the new use categories, for single-family residential, that is not now allowed in the central, in the town center area. Did we not have a discussion, there are a couple of
Yes.
Housing, there are a couple of housing units, historically housing units, that converted to commercial, and we want to allow them
Yes, in fact
To go back to housing, given the great need.
Yes, and if you turn to page 18 at the end of the table on number F, I have a friendly amendment to that, because it didn't quite capture what we were, where we were going. It says, notwithstanding any provisions of the town code, single-family homes in existence
Terrific.
And in residential use as effective date of this ordinance, are conditionally permitted uses within the CC district and shall not be included in any residential density calculations. I think what we were actually hoping to say was, notwithstanding any other provisions of the town code, single-family homes in existence that maintain their residential character at the effective date of this ordinance are conditionally permitted uses within the CC district. And I would offer up, and Katie, you may have another opinion of this, I wouldn't say, it isn't that they're not included, I would say, I would redact that and say, shall be included in any residential density calculations if they are returned to residential use. And if you recall, Commissioner Fragoso, we were, this came up with regards to the east side commercial, east to Pastoree along Sir Francis Drake, which is a very fine-grained area of the CH, much like the original CC in the heart of town. And there, I went out and did a field survey, there are actually only two homes currently that are integral as original homes that are being used for commercial that could go back. So, it's not a huge impact one way or the other, but it would be nice, since we in general have a glut of commercial space overall in the county, and residential space is so dear, to allow those two homes to go back as residential homes. Those, and there's only two of them, that's the whole caveat.
Exactly my point, and that meets, your letter F is perfect. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mimi.
I have a couple of questions. Thanks, Katie. Can you explain the flexibility that you were talking about with respect to the state definitions for the residential uses?
For everyone who may have just picked up a packet, I'm flipping to the third page of the staff report, and that third and fourth page, and in fact, the fifth as well, list each of the residential uses that we contemplate in the ordinance. I'm sorry, Mimi. Can you hear? Sorry, I just need to get closer. I told Jim I feel like a recording artist up here. The third, fourth, and fifth pages of the staff report have each of the residential uses listed and indicate where state law has dictated certain treatment of those uses. And we have also tried, in the ordinance, to cite to the particular state law that perhaps provides the required definition, such as supportive housing and transitional housing. So, that applies to a number of them, I'm happy to walk through each of them. What would be your pleasure?
No, I think just being able to point it out is good here. The other question I had for you is about the governor's proposed density bonus law, 707, and whether you're familiar with it, and know what the status of it is, and what it could potentially do to the numbers that we're talking about for the density.
I am familiar with this. I believe you're talking about the governor's proposed by right housing approval that was originally envisioned, I think, as a trailer to the budget, but has sort of been separated in the process. The latest word is that he is fighting with the home builders regarding the wish, I guess, that prevailing wage requirements be imposed for those projects, which would really send the cost very high. So, I don't know how that may affect the final chances for the bill to pass, but basically, the bill would require that cities provide a ministerial approval process for certain qualifying housing projects that were meeting minimum density and affordable housing benchmarks. And in requiring that ministerial approval, that means that the cities and towns would no longer conduct SEQA review. It also means that cities and towns would not be able to impose conditions, such as we normally have the ability to do with housing projects. And it really would take away some of the city's discretion, well, it would take away the cities and towns discretionary approval of qualifying projects. So, it has been a very controversial proposal, and with this new wrinkle, I'm not sure what its prospects are at the moment.
So, may I, may I add in a caveat? And by the way, Mimi, you're, you know, the, while Katie articulated that the governor's original rider, and now is a separate thing being considered, is regards to by right, by right, the housing density law is state law and still impacts what goes on. And, so, another aspect, if the governor's rider bill does get passed, is that towns that actually have development standards and design guidelines in place, that are prescriptive, that are performance standards, then that's a caveat, that the town can hold the development to those standards, as long as they're not discretionary and they're defined. And part of the process that we're in, in holding workshops to develop a town center plan, there is no town center plan yet, but your housing element, sorry, town center element in the general plan calls for creating a town center plan. So we had one workshop in June, there was one, second workshop scheduled for August 6th that now has been delayed till October 1st. And then there'll be a third workshop after the beginning of the year, but one of the intents of holding these public workshops to create a town center plan, one of the products we hope to get out of that exercise are development standards and design guidelines, which if the governor's thing comes through, would give us more control on just how those units should be placed to mimic the way we want them.
I also want to add, add in a, I looked, I was, add a similar question, and I looked into it and got some additional documentation with respect to the, what's being proposed. And I, I, from what I was reading into it, that the eligible projects are only eligible if they conform, as you, if they conform to the general plan and the current zoning. So there's, they have to still meet those, the general plan and the zoning, which then has already gone through SEQA. So it's not that they're exempt from it, it's that they're already compliant because they conform with current town regulations?
So the draft, can you hear? The draft has undergone some changes, but generally, yes, the proposed project would have to comply with objective zoning and general plan standards. What that means in practice, that objective portion, means that you don't look at a proposed project's compliance with things like aesthetic values and those other development standards or criteria to which discretionary, you know, review would attach. It is more along the lines of setbacks, step backs, height requirements. But yes, it would need to, it would need to comply with those things in order to qualify for that streamlined review process. You're right.
And so does that mean, if it's in conformance with the general plan, which has already been gone through SEQA, it's not really exempt from SEQA, it is already compliant with SEQA because SEQA was done on a set of guidelines? Like, our general plan says you have to do X, Y, and Z, and our zoning says it has to be A, B, and C. And all of that has already been SEQA reviewed with the approval of the general plan. So my understanding is it wasn't exempt, it's already compliant if it fits within what's already been set forth in our general plan and our zoning?
I think that has been one interpretation that the advocates have been arguing for. The potential issue is that you could have a project that conformed to the zoning and conformed to the general plan, but still had some unique impact. So it could be an individual case-by-case thing. But largely, I think, it is hoped that if the project complies with both zoning and general plan requirements, then it will fall within the parameters of what's previously been studied.
And, you know, my concerns are that what it does is it allows for more density, potentially, and that the analysis of the impacts of our general plan had assumptions about density that might not be true if they're granted more. And the other issues, of course, is that our general plan is very subjective and has a lot of aesthetic values throughout that we've tried to wove through our process and make it part of the planning process. So I think there are a lot of things, unique to Fairfax, that could fit in a gray area. So I have some concerns. And I just want to, my, my other, one more question for you, and then I'll stop, is, you know, there's a number of uses on that table that are prohibited, not allowed. And I just hope for the public's benefit, I was wondering if you could just run through them on that table, because I just want us to be very clear as to what Fairfax would be saying is not even allowed with a use permit in this area.
Excuse me, through the chair. Mimi, would you mind if I just come back to this item about what our discretionary review would be for clarification, and then move on to the categories? Could you please just repeat for me? I wasn't sure I heard it correctly. While, as Commissioner Hamilton says, the projects are not exempt, but they would be deemed to comply with our general plan and zoning, but we would not have discretionary review of either the design, the aesthetics, the character, or the setbacks, or other more fine details than the general zoning of the land, right?
Well, I'm glad you asked for clarification. So I'd say two things. One, I don't want us to get too far down the road with the governor's proposal because it is still subject to change and, and we don't know what it's going to look like, and it's not on our agenda, so we're not going to spend a lot of time on it. But it would, in fact, allow us to require a compliance with things like setback and step back, those objective zoning standards and development regulations. It is discretionary items, or items which require the exercise of judgment or opinion, such as whether or not an aesthetic value is met, that would fall to the wayside. So I'm glad you asked that follow-up.
Madam Chair, if I can chime in before we get back to your, could you address the density bonus units that would be allowed under state law with regard to SEQA?
So, as a separate matter, setting aside the governor's proposed by right housing initiative, there is also existing state law, the density bonus statute, that creates a pathway for developers to propose projects that have a greater density than would otherwise be allowed in a particular zone in exchange for the provision of affordable housing in the project. You can meet your density bonus thresholds in a number of ways, through the provision of very low, low, senior housing, there are many different types of ways to do it. But if you can do that, you can achieve a density greater than what would be permitted and seek other benefits under it. So the question had come up, well, if someone brought a density bonus project into the town, would they be allowed to exceed the density maximum that we are establishing in this ordinance? And the answer is yes, if they qualified. But there are other requirements that they would still have to meet, and they would still have to go through the process and show conformance with our other zoning development standards and general plan policies. To the extent that additional SEQA was needed, they would also have to go through the SEQA process. But I realize we're getting pretty far away from Commissioner Newton's question. So, looking at the use table, I'm very glad you pointed out that not every use that's listed in the table is actually permitted. The way you read the table is to look at the use category, and I'm just looking at the first one, animal hospitals/veterinary services. That has a P next to it, so that indicates that that's a permitted use, principally permitted use, that's allowed by right in the district. If you scroll down to horse stables, that has a dash next to it. So right now, we're indicating that that would not be a permitted use in this zoning district. And if I go down a little further to cleaning services, that has a U next to it, which indicates that would need a conditional use permit to be allowed in the district. So that's the way the table is intended to work. We have, I don't remember whose suggestion it was, but someone made the excellent suggestion that we group like uses, so commercial uses come first, followed by industrial uses, then community uses, and residential uses at the back.
Mimi wanted to have a menu of what's now no longer allowed that had been allowed in the CH?
I'm sorry, did you want me to go through and listen?
Yeah, if you don't mind. I mean, just, I was, I was just wanting the public to hear it because I noticed that we don't have it on the screen, so I think people in the audience can't see it. But I would just start with the horse stables. Horse stables, kennels.
Right.
Page 14 of the ordinance.
We can scroll back up to it. So if you look on page 14 of the ordinance, all of the items with a dash next to them are items that would not be permitted, even with a use permit, in this zoning district, unless an applicant came forward and requested a zoning ordinance amendment to allow that use.
Now, may I just say something? This entire document is available online on the town's website, correct?
That is correct. And I believe we have some copies in the back.
Okay. And can I just ask particularly about kennels?
Yes.
While we're here?
Yes.
What if, what if a vet allows pets to be stored or kept with them while they care for them for a week or so? I think that's happening a little bit here. Would that be included, or is that in another category?
So I'm looking at the definition of animal hospital/veterinary services, which is the very first item up there. And the final sec, the final sentence of that definition provides that grooming and boarding of animals is included if accessory to the, only if accessory to the hospital use. So you would be allowed to do it as an accessory use to your hospital services.
Okay, thank you. And of course, all of these non-permitted uses are uses that are not permitted in the new CC zone.
That's correct.
Right, thank you.
Under this draft ordinance, so. So what else would not be permitted? Horse stables would not be permitted. Kennels that operate purely as kennels and not as ancillary to a veterinary office. Lumber and building material yards are not anticipated to be permitted. And I'll just mention that these uses are ones that we had particularly discussed as not having the same character or quality as the uses that we felt were appropriate for the commercial center of town. That doesn't mean they wouldn't be appropriate in some other zoning district in town, it is just a reflection of the location that we're discussing tonight. So I'm scrolling down to the next page, and we have a number of vehicle uses. And I would like the commission's confirmation on this. My recollection was that we were not going to be permitting vehicle uses in the CC because of their heavy reliance on automobile traffic and the associated parking with them. But I'll confess that in going through the tape, I had a hard time following some of the discussion from the May 26th meeting because of my issues. So if the commission has further thoughts or direction, or if you can confirm that this was the direction that we, that you intended to take us, that would be helpful. So right now, all of these uses are not permitted.
I'm going to confess that I have not looked at this before tonight because I didn't have it. But I just want to take a look at two parts of that service station-
Okay.
-and limited vehicle service. And another thought, and that is adding, what's coming is more electric vehicles and hydrogen vehicles. So would we not want to permit, I guess we need to look at the definition of this too, but would we not want to permit more hydrogen filling stations and electric? We don't want to, in other words, I, my concern here is I don't want to eliminate those or not permit those possibilities because we're eliminating service station and limited vehicle service.
I hear what you're saying, and I'm looking at the definition of service station, and it says, "Businesses engaged in the retail sale of motor fuels, lubricants, parts, and accessories may also be referred to as a gasoline station," because that's how other portions of the code talk about service stations, "and includes incidental maintenance and repair of autos and light trucks, but excludes body and fender work or repair of heavy vehicles or trucks. It also includes food and beverage sales as an accessory use." So it really doesn't get to that sort of alternative fuels provision that you're talking about. I think we can certainly find a way to discuss that. What we need to be mindful of is that we're limited in how we can parse the uses. We wouldn't want to set up a classification for uses that were more liked or favored than other uses, but rather would want to think about the relative impacts of the uses. So I'm trying to think of how we might frame that so it reflects the impacts associated with the use.
Katie, nothing in here prohibits charging stations for electric vehicles.
That is correct.
Right. And also, just one comment on hydrogen, good luck with that. We have one station in California so far, and I think it's pretty DOA, but who knows?
It is coming fast, trust me. Can we, can we work that language by limiting the word gasoline and put fuel perhaps, or power and fuel, or something like that? Make it, make it more general and generic rather than saying gasoline everywhere, because...
So we can. I think the issue is-
I'm sorry, what section are you, where's that definition?
Page seven.
Isn't that the opposite of what you want to do?
For the audience, let me just scroll up so everyone can see where we're looking here. So right now, all service stations are anticipated to be prohibited within the new expanded CC district. And a service station is right in the middle of the screen there, is the definition.
I had a quick process question-
Sure.
...in terms of our process for going through this. You gave an overview of what we were looking at, and, and we're kind of bouncing down into one piece and then coming back up, and then bouncing into another little piece and then coming back up. And I know that that's often very difficult for other folks to track-
Yes.
-who are not looking at page seven and then turn to page 14 and those kinds of things. And so I would like to suggest that we stay at a higher altitude and then take either staff's recommendation or your recommendation around whether we then get into a more thorough sequenced discussion of the details before hearing the public, so that they have the benefit of hearing that discussion before making comments, or whether we hear the public and then get into, I'm just not quite sure. But I think bouncing up and down is going to be very difficult.
I think point well taken for the public. You might want to cut the chase on the, the fine tuning and hear from the public, because it may impact your fine tuning. But I would remind you, Madam Chair, I think you actually skipped the reading of the protocol, and I think that's important also, just to, to set the stage for when folks speak. And also, again, I would remind you, we've added the little caveat that individuals get three minutes, and if you're representing a group of five, but you might want to start with there.
Well, I will read that before we open the public hearing, so that in case, also, people who came in late, they have a chance to hear it. And I just would like, also wanted to point out on this discussion with the automobile uses, that if there is a particular use, like we do have, how many service, we've got two service stations, gasoline stations in town right now, that those are still allowed. We're not, those, those uses are grandfathered in, and we have a few repair facilities. We're not saying we're not banning, we're not going to allow them. Those uses are still allowed to continue.
However, what we are saying is if, should they close down, they, a new one would not be allowed to replace it. So the fix, the automobile fix-it shop on Sir Francis Drake, under this proposal, if it closed down, it turned into a clothing store, it could not come back, as it, it would, it would take a zoning amendment for a new one to come back into town, correct?
That is correct. And in addition, if an existing use, such as an auto repair store or service station, wished to expand or grow, that would probably not be permitted under the town code because they would be considered a legal non-conforming use, and the town code does not permit the enlargement or expansion of legal non-conforming uses. But they could remain in operation. That's absolutely true.
If I may, you know, frankly, I'd like to get back to Mimi's question. If you could, before we go to public hearing, I think it'd be great if the public heard what's not permitted, and then, and that would be good for them to know.
All right. So, just to recap from the top, no horse stables, or kennels, or lumber and building material yards. At this point, no vehicle equipment, sales, and services uses, and that includes automobile renting, rental and lease. rental and lease, automobile sales, both new and used, automobile washing, automobile wrecking, service stations, or service stations with automobile washing, so a gas station with a car wash, vehicle or equipment repair, and vehicle and equipment repair with limited vehicle service, which is a subset, no vehicle equipment sales and rental, no vehicle storage, and we have service stations listed twice. So we were emphatic. And then, under industrial uses, no new warehouse uses would be permitted. Turning the page to the community uses, and I'm sorry, I'll scroll down for members of the audience here. Our community uses, we've indicated that the CC district would not house elementary, middle, or secondary schools, nor would the CC district permit single-family residential uses, new single-family residential uses. The existing would be allowed to remain if they maintain their residential character. And then, jumping back up, no new junior second units, which are not anticipated for this district, and that is all.
Thank you.
And I, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I should add, uses that are not listed at all on the table anywhere would also be prohibited. So if it's not mentioned at all on the table, it's also not allowed.
So I wanted to clarify, the ones that are listed with the dash, that are not allowed, they're listed here because they had been allowed, because one might argue, just take them off. And so I'm assuming that they're here because they're vestigial from some other place and time, i.e. the CH, and so we're indicating that at some point, they were either conditionally or permitted somewhere, and now they're not.
Actually, the vehicle uses are all listed because there was an express request to add them back, to add the list back. Otherwise, they probably would not have been added, just for the sake of clarity. Other uses that are not permitted are still called out, just so people don't wonder, junior second unit, did that get skipped somehow? So it's a little bit of both.
Okay, any other questions?
I was wondering if you could briefly go over the limitations, because we did spend a lot of time talking about conditions or limitations for certain businesses, you know, specifically second floor, offices on second floor.
Sure.
Or maintenance in the back.
Sure, I'm happy to discuss that. So if we look at the table, you'll see that the third column over has L1, L2, a number of different listings, and those are all defined in this limitations table. And I know for the audience, it might be more difficult to flip back and forth, so I'll just provide examples. For the uses that are allowed in the district, L1 indicates that the maximum size of that permitted use must be no greater than 5,000 square feet. If you are a principally permitted use, you're allowed by right in the district, you can be up to 5,000 square feet. Anything over that, even if you're principally permitted use, you would need to come in and get a use permit. And that's a reflection of the town's desire to keep this small grain mix of retail uses that really defines the core heart of this district.
And forgive me for interrupting, it had previously been up to 10,000 square feet in the CH.
So if you want to see something greater than 5,000 square feet, you need to come in and get a use permit. And in approving the use permit, we've got a couple of additional conditions of approval that would have to be imposed in order to make sure there weren't additional impacts on the community by allowing that greater size. So this L1 limitation runs through almost every single use in the commercial uses and in the industrial use, and really is an attempt to keep that fine-grained village feel. The second limitation is for uses that the commission wished to allow in the rear of buildings, so not along the storefrontage, but along the rear, to still allow particular uses within the district, but not have them interrupt the pedestrian flow and the uninterrupted facades along the heart of the CC. So these types of uses would include catering services, for example, where you might not get as much pedestrian foot traffic and might be a little slower, but is still a use that we would welcome with a use permit. Excuse me, catering services are a permitted use. That also includes cleaning services, which could still have a home in the district. That includes maintenance and repair services, so repair of small equipment and appliances. That would be fine, but that would be permitted in the back. You could seek approval to move into a storefrontage, if you're one of these uses, if you come in and get a use permit. That's what L2 does. L3 says that, in addition to meeting the requirements of L2, you also have to demonstrate that you don't use any materials or practices that might be hazardous to nearby users or pedestrians in the area. So, for example, maintenance and repair services, small equipment, if you do the type of work anticipated in that category, and it might involve some chemical or sealant or, you know, other type of material, we would want to make sure that we had a look at whether or not your proposed use might potentially endanger anyone before permitting you to operate in a storefrontage. L4 allows for outdoor storage of materials. That one is used very sparingly, I think only, in fact, for nurseries, for obvious reasons. Otherwise, the outdoor storage of materials would not be permitted in the CC district. L5 indicates that a use that's allowed on the first floor is also permitted on the second. And L6 indicates uses that are only allowed on the second floor, and that, for example, would include all of our residential uses, which we only want on the second floor. And I think that is all for the limitations. I can go through the additional use regulations as well, if you like. Okay, so, in addition to the limitations, we also have some additional use regulations, and those are in the final column on the table. And you'll see that for all of the commercial uses, almost every last one has an A in front of it, and that indicates that any use that's permitted by right on the first floor along the street frontage is also allowed on the second floor. So that's pretty self-explanatory. B indicates that the use proposed must be conducted wholly indoors, which is also pretty C only pertains to our residential units, and that just gives the size range. So we would like a minimum of 150 square feet and a maximum of 700 square feet for these units, with the average unit size per building not to exceed 500 square feet. And that's to keep the residences on the smaller side and allow for the development of housing in some numbers, but not large numbers. Subsection D, additional regulation D, provides that, notwithstanding any other requirement of the code, the parking spaces that will be required for residences shall be one parking space for each residential unit that's 500 square feet or less. And then, for every residential unit that's bigger than that, you'll have to comply with the default parking requirements of the code.
Actually, I think that's an error. I think you were saying, we were saying, you had all wanted to relax the parking requirement on units of 500 square feet or less, if the underlying commercial meets the parking requirement. That was your direction at the last workshop.
You are right. So I'm going to jot that clarification down, and Jim, I am so grateful you pointed that out. And if you can help me remember that when we canvass your vote later, we'll want particular clarity on that issue, to make sure that if this goes forward to council, we have it correctly noted. So we'll come back to that one.
And also the two little houses on the east side.
Yes. Let's see. Regulation E is that density cap that we talked about, capping the permitted density at four and a half dwelling units per acre, which just keeps the number of units to a manageable amount. And then subsection F is the one that we already talked about with the existing residences in town that may convert back to, that are commercial that may convert back to residential use.
Four point five units per acre. We applied that blanket over the entire old CH, which would become CC and the existing CC. And when you do the math on this gross square area, it comes to fifty-seven, and I think fifty-seven point four units, or something like that. And if you recall, our housing element called for a minimum infill of 53 units, so it could potentially allow four more than our deal with the state. But we wanted to keep control, particularly since you were allowing the size of the upstairs units to go down to 150 square feet, so there wouldn't be unintended consequences of going way beyond what we were anticipating. And also, the existing central commercial area of town has no cap on the density now, and it's, we really should be having max densities in our land uses. So this is bringing us up to speed through this exercise.
I have a follow-up question for Katie, now that she's gone through all that great detail. I understand why on the table, if you scroll back up, next to single-family home, there's the F, because that's the part about the, if you preserve the character of the residential, you can go back to the residential. So that makes sense. Can you explain why there's B, C, D, and E next to the junior second units, if it's not permitted?
Because it should have been deleted.
Okay, so that's one note, and then I have another. Scrolling up to page fourteen, next to lumber and building material yards.
Same thing.
Is that also?
Same thing, yeah. That was one that we had talked about in both fashions, so...
Because the B is it's supposed to all happen indoors. Okay. And I think that's it.
So just for clarification for the audience, I think the final direction of the planning commission at the last meeting was that lumber and building material yards should, in fact, not be a permitted use. So I deleted it, but failed to delete the additional regulations and the limitations, so I will delete those. Thank you.
Any other questions for Katie? Okay, so I think we're ready to open it up to the public at this point. I'm going to read the protocol, and if you want to line up against the wall, then people, then we'll be able to, then we'll know that, who will want to speak. "The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with the Roberts Rules of Order, and the commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. If you wish to address the commission on any issue, please approach the podium, state your name and address only if you feel comfortable doing so. Individuals have three minutes to speak and five minutes if you are representing a group." So please come forward, and then...
So I'm Alexander Binick from Fairfax, representing the Detoxics Institute. I urge the planning commission to delay their vote on the proposed rezoning ordinance till a later date for several reasons. The public has only had the planning director's report and the ordinance text available for three days. These two items constitute 46 pages of dense information, and that's not enough time for the public to digest them adequately, especially for residents who have a 40-hour work schedule. So rushing ahead with a vote tonight effectively disenfranchises our public. Also, major issues that the rezoning will affect are traffic and parking, both to be addressed in the new town center plan that hasn't yet been fully developed. So that should precede downtown rezoning. Director Moore and Katie, I'm now requesting that tonight, you give us straightforward answers to a few basic questions about developers' ability to override Fairfax's usual rules and limits. Corder Maderas council members stated, as their main reason for approving the monstrous Wind Cup project, that they had no choice, because that area had been rezoned in their general plan, and they feared a lawsuit by the developer that the town couldn't afford to defend. Secondly, yesterday's IJ had a headline about a proposed project near San Anselmo's hub that's eligible under the state density law to have a third story and lot coverage and floor area ratios all way above the town's existing legal limits. As the story says, quote, "By agreeing to build two low-income units, the developer gets awarded the right to build up to an additional 15 market rate units. Density bonus law also grants developers waivers, exempting them from development standards that would preclude their project if only 5% of their units are priced for very low-income households. And the density law grants the developer, quote, 'incentives or concessions in proportion to the number of low-income units they're providing,' unquote." So, Director Moore and Katie, if our own downtown rezoning occurs, why can't the same thing occur in Fairfax? If a developer agrees to include some low-income residential units, doesn't that make moot the ordinance's own limits regarding average unit size, maximum density, et cetera, as well as Fairfax's height and floor area ratio coverage limits? And, as is likely, if Governor Brown gets his proposed streamlined affordable housing law passed, won't that exempt projects near a bus stop, having only 10% affordable housing from nearly all local control, including off-street parking requirements other than design issues? Our planning commission needs to address these crucial issues fully with the public's full participation. That requires slowing down the rezoning process further, so we don't end up with unintended consequences dramatically reducing Fairfax's quality of life. I had requested five minutes. I had requested five minutes for my organization, I have another 30 seconds. Thank you. Our town continually wins the Pacific Sun's Best Town Other Than Our Own Award. Let's not take a step tonight that risks ruining our downtown's character. Please be responsible. Pause this process tonight, and let's collectively take a deeper look before we plunge ahead into a potential windfall by right for developers at great cost to our existing residents and our town as a whole. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Patty Patterson. I'm at 393 Sienic Road, and I operate a business at 31 Bellinas Road. And first of all, I'm new to this, and I'd like to know, what is CH? Where is that located versus CC? Is that Bellinas Road and Sir Francis Drake Boulevard? Yes?
I should have announced this before, but what we're going to do is we're going to have all the public ask their questions, and then we will, we're making a list, and then we're going to answer everyone's questions after the...
Right.
Okay?
And then some of the uses seem to be, as an example, a lumber store versus a lumber in building materials use versus maintenance and repair service, I see, wait a minute, the home improvement. So home improvement is included, sales and service, but lumber and building materials not, and those two seem to be very similar to me. And the only other comment I'd like to make is I think we do need to make room for uses for our... uses for our community like gas stations, fueling stations, and auto repair shops. And I know there's, I know at least three auto repair, small business owners that would be impacted. Thank you.
My name's Josiah Luis, and I'm the owner of Casa Manana, eighty-five Bolinas Road. I've been there for over seventeen years. This is a complicated issue, like the first gentleman said, so I just would like to invite the people here to mull a few things over. There was a talk in the beginning that this ordinance would help create a village character, which to me is just a joke. Taking away retail space will not create a village character, quite the contrary, it will destroy it. A lot of times, many times, towns, places are known for the individual small businesses. That's what ends up defining these places. So this, like I said, is very complicated, but I really hope that you will all keep in mind that what makes up Fairfax is its uniqueness, it's its characters, it's its individual businesses. It's not medical offices or, you know, converting these places into something that isn't going to help the town. It's not going to service the town. Nothing makes a town more than an individual business, a family-owned business. So this is not going to do a character, this isn't going to increase Fairfax's village. It's going to take it apart. It really, really will. Thank you.
Madam Chairman and Commissioners, Frank Egger, here in Fairfax. I'm the owner of Casadaro Winery, a licensed and bonded Fairfax winery. I see major problems with the ordinance. It's very confusing. For instance, the Good Earth Natural Food Store is larger than five thousand square feet and would become non-conforming. Why do that to our number-one sales tax producer? Our two gas stations and the car wash along Sir Francis Drake Boulevard would no longer be legal. Tech businesses, offices, as well as any medical office will now be allowed on the first floor in the central commercials zone and former highway commercial zones, pushing out small retail businesses. The highest paying tenant will end up getting the space. The Casa Manana restaurant space on Bolinas can now be changed from retail to office facilitating Casa Manana's eviction. A number of Fairfax's oldest buildings will be bulldozed for a couple of low-income units and higher-end condos, probably renting in a four thousand dollar a month range. Please continue this ordinance until such time that, one, Fairfax can guarantee real affordable housing, not twenty percent affordable with eighty percent high-end condos, until we have a written, we have written in a historical preservation ordinance for a number of our buildings that were built in the late eighteen hundreds along the Sir Francis Drake corridor. They are being rezoned, and they will end up being bulldozed for new development. We need an ordinance that protects small-town businesses from evictions. We need an ordinance that allows Fairfax, Fairfaxians to fully understand how this redevelopment plan will impact our town. As far as density, the staff report says a minimum of twenty units per acre is allowed. The ordinance says a minimum of four point, a maximum of four point five units per acre. So that's pretty confusing. I'm sure any developer that's coming in is going to look at the staff report and demand a minimum of twenty units per acre. We need, we need a plan that addresses how managed parking and reduced parking requirements for transit-oriented development in the downtown area will impact downtown and our neighborhoods adjacent to downtown. S and N and Fairfax Garage will no longer be legal. I'm wondering whose ordinance we copied this from. This must have come from some city. This is not just an ordinance that Fairfax consultants dreamed up. It's somebody's ordinance, and I'm just asking that you please tell Fairfaxians where this ordinance came from, whose it is. That the state density bonus laws override height limits. Four stories could be allowed in downtown Fairfax. Please continue this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Niccolo Calderero, one six five Frustak. And I've been at meetings in San Francisco in the neighborhoods about the New Year's Proposed Ordinance, and what I heard discussed about it really is divergent from what the land use lawyers have been saying, that it does instead strip out the ability of local authorities to be able to control density. So I think that that should be something that should be looked at carefully. I can email people some of the discussions and decisions that the lawyers have made if you really need it, but this is something that even though the law is not passed yet, it's going to, it actually has been written by the construction industry and it has its own intentions. But I think that what's really missing here is a philosophical discussion, because how big do we want our town to grow? How dense do we want it? I think that people in this town are already doing their, their share in renting rooms, second units, to increase the local availability of affordable housing. If you look at the census data, and then you walk the city, as I've done several times, you talk to people, what you find is that really we have a lot of hidden units that are really making up an incredible effort to provide local, low-cost housing. And we should reinforce that. We should preserve our low-cost housing and stop allowing developers to take our small houses and, and increase their size, and especially destroy our rental units, which has been happening recently. My study in Europe recently found that the density of cities is increasing because of planning requirements. A building that has twenty stories or more saves more energy per unit than a single-family, a rental up to twenty stories. In other words, the bigger the, and denser over twenty stories, you can, you're really preserving and reducing the effect, the carbon footprint in the environment. Now, that's why they're moving most of development, keeping it in the large cities, because it also is tied up to easy transport. You don't have to move people across the Bay Area, you just build in San Francisco and Oakland, et cetera. That's what we should be doing, not building more density in the suburbs. That just continues the sprawl. A B of A study in nineteen eighty-six, followed by Ibn Fadour's nineteen ninety-six showed, study showed that increasing the size of small cities does not cover the cost of services. So the more we grow, the less we can provide for our local housing and services. So I think that, and that's basically because of tax constraints like Proposition thirteen. But I think that since nineteen sixty-eight, I urge people to read the Public Policy Institute of California study of, all the efforts have been passed by the legislature since nineteen sixty-eight to increase and make development easier. They haven't resulted in any appreciable affordable housing. So, you know, that's just, that's just, go to their website, look at, read the study because that's one of the most important studies they've ever published.
Good evening. My name is Fritz Stern, and I'm a resident at twenty-seven Olima Road, forty-year resident of the town of Fairfax. I just want you to know, I drove two and a half hours to be here across the Central Valley, taking time from my family vacation so I could be here for this meeting tonight, because I'll drive two and a half back. Sorry, the carbon footprint gets big, but I wanted to be here. My main concern was follow-up after the last workshop that we had on the town redevelopment plan, and it was incorporating the lot at ten Olima Road and also the Christ Lutheran Church lot. Now, it sounds to me like those have been taken off of this, and I think that highlights some of our communication problems, you know? Not being properly informed. I know there's a lot of people here, but there's a lot of people out of town on vacations that don't know about these things, and I think people need to be well-informed so that they can help you make the best decisions that are the best for the town of Fairfax. I also want to say that concerning number ten Olima Road, allowing twenty-two units on that street on one point two four acres that abut the creek is not sustainable. There are no sidewalks on Olima Road. There are deer. There are people that walk up and down through that corridor day and night to access the library, Manor School, and all of that area up to White Hill School. My kids ride that street. People already fly up and down it. You put units on that property, more than, you know, a few, and the people will be parking on the street, further, further limiting the corridor, no sidewalks, it'll make it dangerous. Kids will be hurt, deer will be hurt. It, it doesn't make sense. And, and I've heard that there isn't a plan, and then my neighbor is told, "Come on down, check it out. We don't even have entry on Olima Road." The egress will be from Manor Road, I believe. And to me, it, it, it's not transparent. I want to know what the plan is for the place before it is rezoned. How, you can't, this, this planning commission is to be the gatekeeper for our communities and our neighborhoods, and to rezone before there is something that is clearly understood by the community where that thing will be, I think is irresponsible. And I would like to have clear ideas of what's going in, where it's going, and how it's going to impact the local character, not only the town, but the local neighborhoods as well. And keep in mind, safe routes to school, public safety, and the infrastructure that some of these developments take that don't exist in the town. Thank you.
Hi, Lynn Corwin, and I live in Fairfax. And I wanted to thank you because it seems like you've put a lot of thought into this, and it seems incredibly difficult and time-consuming to, to look at all of the issues. And I haven't had a chance to look at all of the issues. This thing just came out, and I haven't been able to read it yet. And I really urge you to not vote on this today so that we all have a chance to be able to see what the issues are and where we need to change it, or redo it, or just have a chance to be able to understand what's going on. Also, I, since I haven't read it, I don't know if anything has been addressed about water issues, fire issues, traffic issues, and those are so crucial to us right now because the traffic is already so much worse, and I, I think that needs to be really looked at. And I don't know what relaxed means in terms of the single units, but I think it means that they don't need to have a parking place, and I really think that that's a big mistake. So, thank you.
My name is Diane Hoffman, and I've lived in Fairfax for twenty-seven years. And just really quickly, the fact, my eyes aren't good enough to read your name, I'm sorry, but you, you thought that it was one parking space per unit, and you had to correct her that that's been changed. That is enough for me to say, "Do not vote tonight because you're not all on the same page or clear what's going on." The other thing, you know, just hearing this, to me, it is so draconian. I really feel like I'm in the middle of Invasion of the Body Snatchers, that a repair shop, if someone, which I would love to open a shoe repair shop, to hear that they couldn't be on a street front, I mean, where did that come from? And the whole thing, for example, S and N, I mean, I don't know, he's here, so he's grandfathered in, and I guess my question, when you answer questions later, is if the owner of S and N wants to retire, and he wants to sell his business, can he sell it just as it is so we can continue, so I won't have to drive all the way to San Rafael to a Honda dealer, rather than giving a company like S and N my business? The other thing is, about two years ago, the town of Fairfax was presented with a petition signed by over a thousand Fairfax residents who were against the massive rezoning that had passed. There was a legal option to let Fairfax voters actually vote on it. Unfortunately, the town council decided not to let us vote. Most likely, they were afraid of what the result would be. They chose the second option, which was to take the rezoning off the table for a year. Now that it has been brought back, I should, it's no better than it was before, to me it seems worse. The concerns of the public have been ignored. Your last plan, there were errors which were corrected by you when they were brought to your attention by Frank Egger. But as for all the public's concerns about the intense rezoning, it is as if you didn't hear a word we said. My question tonight is, why are we being ignored?
Excuse me, folks, through the chair, please. If you get too close to the mic, it muzzles it, it's hard to understand, so a little bit of distance is best.
Great. Can you hear me okay this way?
That's perfect.
Awesome. My name's Eric Leland, I'm, I live on Dominga Avenue. I'm a relative neophyte to town government. I've been to six meetings this year, which is six more than I went to last year. But I was struck by the conversation today in reading this document, and I wasn't struck by the acronyms because I still don't understand the L one through L six and the As and Bs of it all. But I was thinking back, the six meetings that I've been to were all because I've had these great conversations with folks here in Fairfax around town, and I was thinking, about a month ago, I was at Taste, and I was talking to folks about an issue. I've been at Casa Manana, talking about issues. I've also been to Gestalt a number of times, has great beer, talked about a lot of issues there at Perry's. And I realize that I wouldn't have talked about any of those issues where, if the ground level were filled up with offices and medical, medical services. I mean, I just, I don't aggregate there, you know? I wouldn't talk to people over my chiropractic service. And so I, I think, I think it's time to just step back a bit, and let's, let's allow some more time that we can all understand the acronyms and start reading a little bit more about this, and just focus on what it means to really grow a community. Because I think we all do want to grow as a community, but we grow as a community by being able to talk to one another, hear and learn about the issues through the documents, through these meetings, but also in the community at places where we gather, which just so happened to not be ground-level service and office and medical buildings. And we're at a very real problem right now. I mean, right now, as we speak, Casa Manana is threatened after being here for seventeen-plus years. I don't think any of us want to see that trend continue. We're just going to end up walking down the street with a lot of silence on either side of us. Thank you.
Miriam Weinstein, Oak Tree Lane. I'm coming at this from a slightly different angle, as the person before someone said, that it feels very draconian, and I'm wondering if there's some way that we can get our state representatives or town councils and planning commissions of small authority in our existence here. It doesn't take into account the fact that we've got steep hills, that we've got almost no buildable land, the cost of land, much less the town character, which is a special place. It's a sanctuary for some of us, and I realize the state doesn't care about that. But perhaps there's some way to address the state and say, "Could you make these regulations for a size minimum fifteen thousand population, twenty-five thousand population, and take the noose off of small towns, especially towns like us? They've got real considerations here." I'm, I'm also curious, I've asked this before of the town council, and they didn't seem to know. I guess it isn't horribly germane, but there was an agreement between Marin County and the federal government regarding affordable housing. And I'm wondering if that agreement is still in place, which requires the town of Fairfax? Or is it just county land? I doubt it requires all affordable developments in Marin County to do outreach to minorities, low-income minorities in adjacent counties. And I'm wondering if that is still in effect. I sent that, I sent that agreement to the members of the town council a few years ago and got no response from them. And it's germane. Anyway, that's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Diana Perdue. I live at 199 Scenic Road for the last 31 years. And I just heard about this today. I heard some rumblings pertaining to this meeting on the neighborhood chat site, which prompted me coming tonight. I hadn't seen any of the plans or the zoning charts until this evening. And it is very confusing when you hear about four and a half units per acre, and then you hear about developers that will get special compensation and bypass rules and regulations if they sweeten the deal with, I don't know, whatever cause of the moment, I suppose. And then you follow it by saying, "What you want is a village feel." Those things don't go together for me at all. I mean, I'm not in favor of dense housing or rezoning to add such units. I don't know if it was the idea for such a plan comes from our elected officials, you folks, or is it the Association of Bay Area Governments? And I'm not even sure if Fairfax is part of that group. I would like to know that. And if Fairfax does belong to it, why would we? Do they give you money? Is it state money that is given forward by those people for them to have so much control over what small towns do? So my suggestion is, if possible, we secede from their agenda. And if the plan is entirely staff-driven, then I just want you to know that I'm not in favor of it. I think we're a small town, and I believe we have a right to remain so. I think we could look to Bollinas for inspiration.
Every other town in Marin has been destroyed from overbuilding. Traffic's already a problem here, and compounding that are North Bay drivers who now are adding to our congestion by using Sir Francis Reg Boulevard through Fairfax as an auxiliary route to 101. How many cars can we handle? And who can abandon their car? Public transportation's totally inadequate. It's not practical. But we can't handle more traffic. My final point in opposition to this project is water. And our source is finite, and I think so should be the number of homes in Fairfax. So that's my thoughts for this evening. Thank you.
I am very happy to see so many local treasures here tonight. I really love this town. I'm concerned about changes that could threaten the only-in-Fairfax counter-cultural personality of our town. I personally think Fairfax is pretty great the way it is. I'm worried that the homogenized redevelopment plans for our town will grease the skids of gentrification here further. We're already losing interesting, colorful people and places. Our sleeping ladies, Szechuan chefs, Casa Mananas, our artists and musicians and poets are being edged out daily. We all want transparency in governance. Pivotal zoning changes to this special town should be very well-vetted and agreed upon by the majority of our residents. Potential changes need to be well-publicized and well-articulated by our town leaders so that residents can be informed and participate in the discussion. We need to understand why each of these changes is being pushed specifically and by whom. And we need time to study and respond to proposals. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sue Byrne, and I live at 107 Mono. I've been a Fairfax resident for 20 years now. And I just want to join the chorus of voices that are asking you to give this more time before a vote is made. It's a lot of material, a lot of really dense material that seemed to have come out just in the last couple days. There wasn't much publicity, and there seems to be some lack of consistency or lack of clarity even on what decisions were made prior to this. For example, the under-500-square-foot parking issue. I think we need to take more time, give people a chance to see what this would actually look like once it came into play, where, if all these units are built downtown, where those cars would go. I don't see any extra parking downtown now, and I certainly don't see parking that would be available for this multitude of units. Earlier, we heard that a group process or a group planning meeting that had originally been scheduled for August is being deferred till September because it's so important that people have a chance to participate. Well, I'd like to say that this decision is at least as important, if not far more important than that, and it deserves to be pushed back till people have a chance for input and study as well. Thank you.
Hi, Denise Larson. I live on Scenic Road. I've lived in Fairfax for 32 years and been lucky enough to have been a homeowner for 28 years. Got one of those falling off the hillside summer cabins. I've seen the traffic and parking become horrendous over the last several years. I know there's been some demographic changes. I think any plans, whether you're looking at the town center, you're looking at proposed senior housing or low-income housing, or this current zoning, that you have to look overall at those issues unless they're addressed first. We're setting up a situation. There's some days, it can take me 20 to 30 minutes, I hate to say, even to get through the hub in San Anselmo. You know, the extension from traffic being still way backed up, you know, 10:00 in the morning. I can get home at night, when I come back from work at 9:00 at night, I can get through from the highway to my house in 10 minutes. I also know that a lot of us live up in the hills, and to think we can walk and utilize services and care, but where we've got kids or groceries, or it's raining, or we got a bad knee, or whatever's going on is not realistic. But I would really like to see, there's like separate proposals that are kind of moving, and unless we look at traffic and parking altogether. But it's the one thing, a lot of people, I know a lot of people, and they say, "You're so lucky to live here." And I truly feel blessed to live here. But they say, "Don't you just love it?" I said, "Yeah, but the traffic and the parking, there's downtown businesses I'd love to use today, and I can't find parking next to them, unless I'm at Fairfax Lumber. That's a guaranteed." So I'd just like to know what you guys are doing as far as considering separate things because something's happened, lots of things have happened where it's gotten really bad, and I'd hate to see things piecemealed in instead of looking overall for traffic and parking and the quality of life that we have here. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mason Holcomb. Heard a lot in the presentation here about aesthetic values. I have a degree in fine arts, and I have a little observation about their sense of aesthetics. I wonder how many of you are included in their vision for this town? We already know that Josiah is...
Could you speak to us, please?
We already know that Josiah isn't included in this vision, it seems. And I would encourage you to move away from your sense of aesthetics and focus more on social values. I spoke here once before proposing that there should be rent control in Fairfax, and I'd like to repeat that.
Hi, my name is Michelle Simonson. I live right across the street. And I am still a fairly recent resident. I've only been here for six and a half years, but I am still madly in love with this place. And I'm really grateful for all the people who show up and care, and for all the work that you guys have done. But I, okay, I don't work a full-time job. I don't have kids to juggle. I'm right across the street, so it's easy for me to show up here. But even with all the time that I've had to try and look over all this, I'm completely confused by what it is that's being proposed. And I would love to see something, well, first of all, to put it off, for sure, so that people have a chance, people who, you know, don't even have a clue that this is happening, get a chance to learn more about what's going on and express their views about their town. But also, if there could just be some more clarity, because I was looking over this stuff today, and I'm like, "What does this even, what does this mean?" So if there could be, and I've tried to talk to some people who I know might be in favor of it, to find out, what are the pros? What are the good ideas about this? Because I'm having a hard time seeing what those are. So if there could be, you know, something that lists pros and cons, here's the issue, here's the pros, here's the cons, and have people have an opportunity to vote on that or to, you know, have some input on it, that would be great, other than just this short time. So, anyway, I really, I agree with everything that's been said so far, and am really grateful to be here, and thank you all.
My name is Mark Hammerman. I've lived in Fairfax for one year. I would like to make an observation and a comment. My observation is, I assume this meeting is open to people who are in favor of this plan, in addition to people who are opposed to the plan. And I haven't heard many people speak in favor of the plan, so I think you all should take that into account when you consider voting on it tonight. I moved here from St. Louis. I've lived in St. Louis for 68 years. And my children moved to the Bay Area within the last 16 years. I lived in an area of St. Louis suburb called Frontac. It's a lot like Ross. So when we came looking for a place to live, we looked at Ross, and we couldn't afford it, and found a great place in a town called Fairfax. And we bought it, and then we looked around and said to ourselves, "This place is really different. It's close to Ross, but it's really not like Ross at all." So we wondered whether we had made a mistake. We bought the place in 2010. Our kids kept it warm for us, and we moved here full-time a year ago. And in that year, I've come to love this place. I hope you all appreciate what you have, what we have. This is a unique, it is a wonderful town. I don't understand it as well as you all do because I've only lived here a year, but please don't do anything to mess it up.
I've got a kind of a cough thing, so. My name is Jim Bitter. I'm from Mill Valley. And I used to go to parties at Ed Bocci's house behind the theater in high school, Brink Catholic High School. I'm a native of Marin. And I heard people asking, "Why are we here today? What is happening to this little town called Fairfax?" Well, what is happening here is happening in every city, in every county, in California, Oregon, Seattle, and from here to the East Coast. This is the American Planning Association in every planning department telling all of you what this town, Mr. Rogers' neighborhood, is supposed to be looking like. And I heard some people ask, "Why are we here today?" And I'm wondering if the six of you know why we're here. I was dining for Democrats in San Rafael. Daryl Steinberg was there. He drafted, I asked, "Who drafted 375?" How many people know 375? It's SB 375. It's Plan Bay Area, tying housing and transportation. And he said, "Well, I did." Then he said, "California League of Cities and other stakeholders." Now, one of you, the member of the city council belongs to ABAG. ABAG spits out the RENA numbers, Regional Needs Housing Assessments. So the foreign body that's come in here to change this place is planning departments all over California and Oregon and Seattle. And if it isn't bad enough, they hire American planning consultants to write the general plans, the greenhouse gas inventories, the climate action plan, the housing element, going around doing spot zoning. So they put the language in your general plan so the developers can come in here, like Bruce Dorfman in Mill Valley, Bridge Housing, they're all over the planet. They come in, the language is in your general plan, it has to match the, you know, the housing element. They're doing it in every city. You should be explaining it to these people. And most of Fairfax has no idea what's going on here. Most of Mill Valley has no idea. Most of Marin County, people living in Pleasanton, they got sued by the state of California because they didn't get their RENA numbers in. So if you went to TAM, Transportation Authority of Marin, chaired by Stephanie Maltin-Peters, they were told by the staff, "You will get your RENA numbers in. We have one city that hasn't done that, Regional Needs Housing Assessment." That's an economist at ABAG who's telling Fairfax that you need to build so many units of housing. You need to build the multifamily housing, and you need to have the complete streets format, which every city is doing. And your staff should be telling all the residents what a complete streets is and where these mandates are coming from. And the city council is really the place that created this thing, like in every city, every board of supervisors in California, they're the ones that are going to vote on this thing. You are just like pawns that are going to raise your hand, you're asking all the same questions that these people are asking, and it's scary. We have the same thing in Mill Valley, the zoning design advisory committee staffed by architects and builders and American Planning Association consultants. So help these people. Go outside to have coffee with them. Tell the residents of Fairfax what is really happening here before this language gets put in here where they can't, some person can't have a little business in Fairfax. Thank you for the extra eight minutes. I made it without coughing.
Hello, my name is Kirsten. I've lived in Fairfax for almost 20 years. First of all, I know that many of you have worked very hard on this, but I don't agree with it. So I'm up here to just state my name and to tell you that. And I want to reiterate a few of the bullet points. People have already brought up pretty much everything I've wanted to say, but I just want to reiterate it, just to second and third opinion it. So here we are. Those 500-square-foot units, no parking? Where would they park? I don't agree with that. Where would businesses like S&amp;N Auto do? What would they do if they wanted to sell? It's just not right to do that to a business owner. This plan does not equal your definition earlier, in my opinion, of a village feel. It's quite the contrary. And I'm curious who's running this change. We all understand that the state is mandating affordable housing, but why are all these zoning plans happening now, under our own planning commissions, you know, overseeing this? Is it possible to admit that our current zoning laws were actually pretty good to begin with? The matter of seceding? How do we fight the state? Have you explored that? Hey, if San Francisco can ban plastic bags, why can't Fairfax fight the state on this? We could be the first town ever. Casa Manana had permits approving his restaurant originally, and now you want to change permitting after he's been given notice? That's just cruel. It doesn't make any sense. Property values will go up if a plaza is built. If mom-and-pop shops survive these changes, if you implement these, how will they survive their property owners doubling or tripling their rent when proposed plaza, this proposed plaza that you're planning deems the property value higher? How will they survive that? We want well-publicized changes on our agenda, not just zoning numbers. We are the public. We can't, we don't know what those mean. So a little more information on the agenda would be terrific. And what I want to know finally is this. It's a generational question. My son was born here. How many businesses right now are not compliant with these new use permits? I kind of want to number eventually on this so I can tell him that many of the businesses that he loves, that he goes to on a weekly, daily basis, he will no longer be able to enjoy in the future because they won't be allowed. How crazy is that? I urge the planning commission to delay the decision and open up this discourse to the public. the public. Thank you very much.
I'm Jessica Green. I, I'm a senior. I live up in the hills of Fairfax. And if, if there's not parking downtown, I'm not going to be able to ride a bicycle downtown. I, I need, I need to be able to have parking as I get older. And a lot of people are in that situation here, and the fire trucks have to be able to get up and down. And I think that, you know, I mean, I know this isn't about the, the closing Bellinas Road, but all that, that is going to impact all of us with parking here. And the other thing is, like, if we're having this workshop so that the people of Fairfax can say what we want, why are we voting for all this stuff before the workshop happens? I mean, we should really be waiting for the, the people's input to make these decisions and rush into rezoning everything. And then later ask, well, what do you want, after we've made, changed the height limit and the commercial zone, and, you know, all, all these things that are happening tonight? And why are they all being done at once, so that we, we can barely keep track of them? And we need to think about this, and we need to ask the people of Fairfax what, what they want. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is Nancy, and I'm from San Anselmo. Fairfax is one of the only towns left that's actually a town in Marin County. Mill Valley is pretty much gone. They've changed their zoning downtown, so there'll be three stories. Wouldn't want to be there when the fire hits. They just rezoned to allow a business complex to be, and a restaurant to be built over the creek where the lumberyard is, if anybody's familiar with Mill Valley. Fairfax is, is unique, and I don't think that the powers that be that are trying to Disneyland-ify Marin County care for that. These RENA numbers, you're going to hear these names, and you really should educate your public about them. RENA, PDAs, TODs, complete streets. In San Anselmo, we're looking at major housing being built all over the town, to the point where people are going to be living on the freeway. So we have a planning commission appeal coming before our council for the, where the TCBY used to be. They want to build 16 units. They got bonus ones, three stories high, and it's going to be right out to the streets, Sir Francis Drake. You like that Billy View Bank building? I don't know how that got built, but probably all of San Anselmo will be built up that high. And probably so will Fairfax. So council, planning commission, you're the first step to stop that and to keep Fairfax what it is. It's the only real town left in Marin County. Please, keep it that way.
Hi. My name is Roberta Anthies. I'm from Fairfax. After the meeting on October 29th, 2015, I sent the town council and Jim Moore a letter with four questions. And I didn't get one answer from, for even one of those questions, and I got no response at all. And this is another reason I think we need to postpone this decision. If people aren't able or willing to answer those questions, it means we need more time to understand them and to think about them, and to, and to give answers to the people here. So because of that, I called Sacramento, and now I know the answer to my questions. The first question I asked was whether or not HCD, Housing and Community Development, required that we rezone HC to CC and eliminate our use permit. And I'm, I'm most concerned about eliminating the use permit. I think it's really important that we maintain local control. Melinda Coy, who has worked on Fairfax's specific plans, said that this rezoning was required if there was a shortfall of identifiable housing. And I pointed out that Christ Lutheran Church was now supplying 14 more units through their density bonus than the RNHA required. She said that the density bonus counted toward the RNHA if they're already built. So this is another reason to postpone making this decision now. If the, if the, if the Christ Lutheran Church project gets underway and supplies us with 14 extra units, we may not be required by the HCD to rezone HC to CC at all. So I think we should at least wait to see if that's a possibility. It may or may not be. But before we rush into this decision, it's really important that we know whether or not we're in a shortfall, or whether we can supply through density units, you know, enough numbers that don't require this by law. And so we're not violating any housing element or anything else, but we're preserving our, our right, but that we get from the use permit to define the terms of our town ourselves. So I recommend that we wait. Thank you.
I sincerely appreciate the fact that you've gone about this process this time, in my opinion, correctly. And because that, I would not stand before you with a referendum, as I was very happy to jump on last time. However, I also feel that you're able to kind of hide and avoid doing a full-blown CEQA or EIR by amending a pre-existing one, which I don't think is really fair to the cumulative effects of our county. So if we all consider that the average Marin County household generates 11.7 car trips per day, that's the average, and then we take that for an accumulative effect for the entire county. If you consider the additional housing that we're adding here, multiply it just by an even number of 10 for car trips originate and return on daily basis, add that to the upcoming congestion of the smart train that is bifurcating all of the east and west routes all the way through the Santa Fe Valley, and when it continues, that includes the on-and-off ramp for the freeway that will stop traffic. At the same time, we're implementing traffic calming on Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, reducing those lanes to 11 feet. That, again, is adding to congestion. So I really think that a better argument here, and I also, I'm probably the person that would benefit more than anybody else in this town with additional density. Financially, this is the best thing that could ever happen to me. I was married in this town 37 years ago, and I don't think this is good for our town. I would not support it. But if you add all these cumulative effects that we're all adding into, I think you'll see that we're not doing the right thing. The worst thing that would happen, if you just said, we're not going to do these mandates, we're not going to follow 375, we're going to have our own character, you will lose a whole lot of state and federal grants. So what? I think that we're very sustainable, and I think we can find a better path than just getting on the bandwagon with somebody else. The reason we don't want centralized government, and why I supported Great Britain leaving the EU, is because they don't want somebody far away that doesn't know our community dictating what's best for us. I think we know what's best for us. And I'm hoping that as our planning commission, you will step with the town, and please, I appreciate how much work you've done and your vested interest in completing this, but really listen to the constituents in your town and find a better way. Thank you.
Denise, again, I'll take my use of my original minutes. I forgot to mention something. Back to the parking and traffic. I did move here when Sir Francis Drake and San Anselmo was one lane each way. And when they put two each way, it was like a miracle. Now it's not enough. One thing I wanted to mention, as he mentioned with the housing density, you know, to have units and think that people aren't going to drive. My parents drove into their 90s, both of them, to think they're going to do public transportation, to think that people aren't going to have friends come over, that they're not going to have roommates. I know people can fit another person in a 500-square-foot house, because that's how big my house was when I bought it, that they might have family, friends come, they might have a dog walker come over, a nurse, meals on wheels. Every house, every unit adds people that are coming in, which is fine. I want people to have visitors and family and be able to use services, but it does add in, we're already kind of, it feels like critical mass. And so, again, I'd like to see that all these plans look at traffic, parking, quality of life, and sustaining the businesses we have here, and not piecemeal it in. Thank you.
Florence, excuse me? Rashit? Okay, we're good. Hi. I'm definitely for really knowing what we wanted, what's, what's the purpose of changing the zoning before we change the zoning? I want to make sure we are in agreement about the plan before doing any changing of zoning. It just makes no sense to change the zoning before we know why we're doing that and agree to why we would be doing that. Okay? I think it's really important to slow down and to make sure we're going forth in a together way and a way that's going to result in only good things. You know, not solving one problem, but creating other problems. So how I like to create is to look at what we want to create first, okay? And then, you know, how do, how do we create that in a way that's going to better our lives and, and not cause any problems? You know, so if we have a housing, if we need more housing, okay, how do we create more housing without creating more traffic? You know, so one idea for me that comes up for that is, live-work is a really awesome model for creating housing and less traffic. You know, I was just talking to a business owner here in Fairfax about this, and turns out, he doesn't live here. That's traffic. Why does he not live here? Because he can't afford to live here. He lives in Nevada. Okay? That's traffic. So we, we need to look at, you know, this holistically, and, you know, you see what I'm saying? You know, so solve it so holistically, you know, not just build more houses and forget about traffic and, and all the other components that are, are part of the whole system. So is there anything else? Thank you. I know you've, you've done a lot of work here, and, and I'm so grateful everybody's showing up and talking, so, thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak before we close the public hearing?
Hi. I'm Joe Franazak. I live on Pacheco Avenue. I just have a question for the, the panel that I don't quite understand. If the governor's proposal, I think it's numbered 707, which is a spot bill, which would put into place the developer's as-of-right ability to develop without regard to the local plan, is there a reason to change the zoning now? Because if you don't, once the legislature passes that bill, you may be precluded from then preventing a developer to subsequently work within the current guidelines and perhaps build or overbuild in that, under that situation? I don't know. I haven't examined it. The question just occurred to me. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, so at this point, we're going to close the public hearing, and Jim, or Katie, who, is there, are one of you, I think, have been keeping a list of comments and have responses ready for, for some of the questions that were raised by the public?
I have, I have been keeping a list. I don't know about you, Jim, and I'm, if the commission wants me to address some of those issues, I'm happy to do it. Is that the will of the commission? Should we?
Well, yes, I think that we do, that, that we, we told the public that we were going to respond to their questions afterwards, and I think that, that we should proceed with them.
Katie, how about if you go first, and then I'll fill in from my list if you have a slightly different approach?
Okay. So first of all, a huge thank you to everyone who came out tonight, especially for driving two and a half hours from family vacation. That is a real gift to the community to come and participate, and it is appreciated. So a number of the questions and comments focused on the re, the proposed rezoning and what effect that would have on a developer coming in looking for a density bonus project, right? What would happen if we do this rezone, and then we get an applicant who wants to use the density bonus statute? Well, let's stop just at the outset and say, the density bonus statute is on the books already. Anybody could walk in to Fairfax with an application today and ask for a density bonus if their project qualified for one. So rezoning doesn't suddenly make a change in terms of, do you qualify for a density bonus? Density bonuses are already out there, they're already available. What rezoning would do is put a cap where no cap exists right now. So right now, you can develop second-story residential in the CC district without a maximum density. The rezoning would impose that maximum density. So that was a, a common theme that I think maybe has been slightly misunderstood. A number of the speakers spoke about particular uses that they would like to see continue in their existing locations, and had questions about whether or not an existing use that might not be permitted in the future would be either forced to go out of business or would be unable to sell to a subsequent operator of that same type of use. An existing business whose use was not permitted by the new ordinance would not be forced out of business by the rezoning. And if an existing business owner wanted to sell or transfer their existing business to a new operator, that would continue the use. A change in ownership does not break that chain, so that use continues. You could still sell your gas station, you could still sell your auto repair shop. That would not be impacted. Now, would the new owner, or for that matter, the current owner, be allowed to expand that use? No. Not as this is currently framed. And if that's something the commission wishes to consider, they can, but that is how it is currently set up. You could certainly transfer the use. Does the commission want me to address questions?
I think that might be an appropriate question to answer.
So there are provisions regarding your ability to, to rebuild after a catastrophe. And honestly, as I sit here, I don't recall what the town's provisions are. So I don't want to give you an incorrect answer, and I'll tell you, I would have to look at the town code to tell you how the town code addresses existing businesses that have been lost due to fire. Oh, Linda might know.
Yeah. What the code, the code says is that conditional uses can be restored as long as you don't increase any kind of nonconformity, as long as it's restored within a cer, within a year. So you can't let it burn down and let it sit there for two years.
What about legal nonconforming?
Same thing. As long as you begin work to rebuild it within a year.
So some of the other questions had to do with, let's see, there was one comment, the staff report references an existing 20 units per acre. I've gone back through the staff report. I honestly don't see that mentioned in the staff report. What I do see is that in the memorandum regarding the CEQA review, there's a notation that the mitigated negative declaration that was prepared for CEQA purposes for the general plan anticipated a minimum of 20 units per acre in the CC district. That was what was anticipated as the maximum for where we are right now. Rezoning and adopting a 4.5 unit per acre maximum would substantially reduce that. Yes?
So just to clarify, the CEQA, which is the environment So just to clarify, the SEQA, which is the environmental quality review that was done on our entire general plan, was done under an assumption of a density way higher, 20 units per acre than what we're actually gonna put into place. Is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
So that the SEQA was done on 20 units per acre, but now when we're actually implementing the zoning, we're saying it's 4.5 units per acre?
That's correct.
Okay.
Can I just articulate, when the original general plan was passed in April 2012, which had a then housing element in it, we knew that housing element was going to fail with the state, and we were gonna have to go back to the drawing board on how we articulated things. And we had stipulated a lower number of units going in the new CC, but we had put in a density threshold just as a placeholder, never thinking that it would go beyond the one, the numbers we were wanting to incentivize. We then changed our thinking that, no, we don't, there was so much concern by the public about unintended consequences of more units than our minimum requirement by the state, we redacted that reference to 20 units an acre.
So I just wanna, just for clarity, because I think we heard a lot of questions about this is really complicated stuff and how do we understand all of this? And so, quick on the SEQA, if I'm getting this correctly and helping is, when we had the vision for the general plan, then it goes through an environmental review process. And essentially, you, you did an environmental review on, on a, on a larger, you have to pick something to model your impacts after. So the, the density that you were picking to model it after was high, and if I'm understanding it, then the current density bonus laws that we're talking about that come into play, you get a certain number of units over what we're saying. So we say 4.5 units per acre, if you get a density bonus, you can add, I don't know, 20% or something, but...
The maximum, if you were to meet the most stringent, I mean, as, if you met the highest standard of affordability, the maximum increase would be .35. So for 10 units, you could add three and a half more units. The maximum allowable, if you had the ma, you know, met the threshold, the highest threshold for affordability, which is actually quite low.
Thank you.
Let's see, a, a number of speakers were concerned that we were going to be taking away retail space. Retail space is still a permitted use under the proposed ordinance, and you can find that under the listing retail uses, and you'll see that it's listed as a permitted use. So it's certainly not the intention to take away anything from that. Um, there was a speaker who was concerned that the Tenolima process seems to have dropped off of this. Tenolima is an entirely separate zoning issue, that's not part of this zoning project. So that will be considered separately from this process, so that's why it's not mentioned in the reports, and that's why it's not reflected in the ordinance.
Katie, can I interrupt you? Can we just go back to retail for a moment? It was also brought up that we were, this draft ordinance would replace retail with office allowed in the storefront, in, in the front. I don't believe that's the case, is it? I believe offices in the back or upstairs, as is currently the case.
So you're correct. Office is permitted in the rear of buildings, so not along the storefrontages, and it would be conditionally permitted in a storefrontage if you met certain requirements. So you could come in and ask for a use permit to allow an office in the storefront on the first floor, but you would have to come to this body and make sure you met the requirements that were listed for it.
And, and Katie, nothing that this draft ordinance is doing would preclude a business like Casa Manana being where it is, correct?
That's correct. Eating and drinking establishments, which would be Casa Manana, are generally permitted in this district. You may have to get a use permit if you, for example, have full alcoholic beverage service or have live entertainment, but we already require use permits for live entertainment and dancing. So that's not changing.
Right. As a case study, um, in fact, the space that was vacated by Yoga Mountain next to Casa Manana, and if the chiropractor business in the back wanted to come and use more space in the front, either the Casa Manana old restaurant space or the old Yoga Mountain, they'll have to come before this board to amend their use permit in order to come towards the front, just for the public record as a case study.
Please go ahead and do that?
Yes. Sorry, go ahead, I didn't mean to...
So offices that are not currently in the front, that we wish to move into storefrontage would need to come in and get a use permit from the planning commission.
Can I, can I just, I just wanna mention to the public, um, we would be good if all of you stay. A lot of you have said that you're confused and haven't been able to understand some of this. We're trying to go through now an outline of responding to all your questions and comments. It would be good if you would please stay and, and listen. Some of you have left, so I'm, I'm just mentioning this. Thank you.
Also, if people are interested in a comparative, a comparison, comparing kind of what's allowed now along Bellinas and Broadway in our downtown area under the current zoning of the current CC, there is a table, and it's called the comparative table of uses, and it, and it outlines what's currently allowed now. It's that long list of very detailed of what was allowed now. And so you can look and see, oh, it was already allowed or it wasn't allowed. So that's also included.
Um, there were some general questions about what will happen if we don't do this rezoning? What is the worst that can happen? So we have amended both our general plan in 2012 and our housing element in 2015 to indicate that we are going to be rezoning all CH parcels to CC. So we have committed ourselves to that. State law says that we are, state law, separate and apart from HCD, says that we are required to bring our zoning into conformance with our general plan. So that's what we're trying to do, is make the zoning match with the general plan said we were going to do. Now, the general plan, including the housing element, said that we would rezone the CH to the CC, partially to satisfy our regional housing needs allocation numbers. That's true. But there's also language in the general plan about revising the CC district to protect this village character that everyone cares so much about. So you see that reflected in the zoning ordinance's attention to the small details, such as permitting uses 5,000 square feet and smaller, to avoid permitting huge uses with a sea of parking around it, like we saw in the old CH district. We're trying to follow the general plan's direction to come up with zoning that will allow for very pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly uses, that people don't need a car to walk between and amongst. I, I know there are other comments, I've got five pages of them, but I think those were some of the recurring themes throughout. If there's anything else in particular you'd like me to respond to, I'm happy to.
Perhaps I could chime in and then, so, we, um, I, I have a little list I'll run through here also. Um, excuse me. So this is a complicated process, and since 2012, when the general plan was adopted, we were required to update the housing element, which has happened twice now, most recently in May last year. It's been several years since targeting the Christ Lutheran Church site, for example, and now we do have an application coming in that's pending. It's taken a long time to get to this because we did have the petition drive where the rezoning was retracted. A year has lapsed, the housing element was updated, and so we are back to this exercise. It is complicated. This business is not getting any easier. There's incredible overlay of regulatory requirements involved here. It's a daunting exercise. It's a daunting exercise for staff, and I commiserate with the public, especially when you don't have the opportunity to hear this month after month after month in the study sessions. It's hard to catch up. I heard concern about the traffic and parking, and as someone said, it is happening all over. We have impacts happening on us from different things going on, from Sonoma to North County to the West Side. And it is a mess. And, um, I think what has been crafted so far is a best effort to sort of maintain the ability for people that have been here and are losing a foothold economically to have options for housing, to create a, uh, an area of uses where people can walk to them or ride or use multimodal transportation. We have bigger issues in order to tackle the parking and traffic, and, and hopefully during the, the process to develop a town center plan, we will hopefully come up with ways to help alleviate the parking demand, which is not all the time, but in critical times, and also the traffic impacts also regionally. You touched on the uses issue, and I hope the Casa Manana example helps alleviate some fear. The policy issue with the 500-square-foot units or below not being required parking as long as the underlying commercial meets the parking requirement is a, is a, you know, touchy policy issue, and you might wanna have a thorough discussion on that based, based on how many people have raised that. I just wanna remind you, I remember the conversation well, and part of the reasoning was to incentivize people to build smaller units by not being burdened by the parking requirement, because parking can, can stop the creation of what would be small, efficient units, because there's so many, so few opportunities for the small property owners, especially in the old CC, to provide the parking. But if you recall, it's not part of this ordinance, but at a later date, we're gonna talk about managed parking programs or a parking assessment district where, um, you know, in the future, if this didn't work out well with the idea of relaxing or not requiring parking for smaller units, then it can be amended in the future when you take a more comprehensive approach to the parking issues in the town. If you could just let me get through my list and then, and then circle back. We talked about, you talked about the uses and the not compliant uses and what would happen, and in fact, the, the fire. So the, and then also in terms of, you know, the town center process is parallel, but there are two separate actions called for in the general plan that we are at the same time moving forward on, so I realize that it can be confusing. I think we vetted the governor bill, governor's bills issue and, and the density bonus, I believe we've spoken to that, but these are tricky issues. And then with regards to the utilities of water, trash, sewage, um, the SEQA process that was gone through, which is prescribed by law, did look at the capacity in systems and, um, and the SEQA review that we're relying on, we believe actually this draft ordinance is less impact than was occurring before that was modeled. I know it's, it's hard to wrap your head around it when we're in a drought, but there is an exercise that's gone, been gone through with regards to the availability of water and, um, and sewage. And I know it's controversial, but there's also an economy of scale with maintaining infrastructure. The Ross Valley has an antiquated sewage system, and, um, there is an economy of scale with the number of people using a system. Simple example is it's about 300 times more expensive to deliver mail in rural areas than just going through mailboxes down the street. That's a sort of simple example of infrastructure and the economies of scale. So I think that's my list. And now, Shelley, you had something you wanted to ask?
I just wanted to clarify, when you were talking about the parking requirements for the 500-square-foot...
Or below.
Or below, and you were using like the underlying yada-yada thing. That means parking is required. So we're not saying there is no parking for those units. We're not, it, parking is required for the existing use of the building, so, so if...
Commercial.
Commercial, right. So the, so if there's a commercial building that doesn't have any parking and is nonconforming right now, if they have a unit, a 500-square-foot unit, they have to put in parking for that 500-square-foot unit, because they don't have any parking. If they have a building that already meets the current parking requirement for that commercial use, then there's already parking on site. And what we're saying is that parking can now be used for both the commercial and the unit and the residential unit. The idea being that during the day, it's a shared parking use. So during the day, it's used by the commercial use, and at night, it's used by the housing use. So I just wanted to clarify that we aren't saying that there isn't parking, it's that if there's already parking, that parking will do double duty. And not, because you...
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, and we did, we did have that conversation, and by the way, all the prior meetings are available. Sorry? Sorry. We did have that conversation about shared parking analysis and, um, okay, so...
Okay, so, um, are there any other, um, comments?
It's more...
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's where we are now.
Okay. I, um, first of all, thank you, everyone, for coming. It's inspiring to see the democratic process here in Fairfax. That's why I volunteered to be a planning commissioner. However, I am so concerned and frustrated between what we're doing and the disconnect. I, you know, this is kind of a global, big-picture issue, because what I heard, about 90% of what I heard is inaccurate or is not in line with what we're trying to do. We're actually trying to give you more of what you already like. We're trying to expand the village feel. We're trying to reduce the housing that was previously approved. So, you know, in general, I, I'm wondering what's going on out there before you get here? And then we talk about all these issues, but it's not registering. And I think, how can we improve the way we communicate? Because we're saying it, but nobody is, is hearing it. So I don't know, this is, obviously cannot be answered right now. We had six meetings prior to this one. Nobody said we are approving anything, we are recommending it to the town council. That has been missed. Nobody's talking about getting rid of Casa Manana or all the retail shops. We would like to add more. So if there is a way, a vehicle to somehow communicate to us how we can improve, please, please, because we're all here because we have a, a burning heart to keep Fairfax the way it is. And...
Do this.
Well, exactly, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to improve... Well, anyway, I think there has to be a, a vehicle for better communication. I don't know what that is, but I just would like to say that we are trying to do exactly what you are asking for, and we are just making a recommendation exactly for that. And we are trying to accommodate the Nevada worker that has to travel from Nevada to work here. If he had a place to live here above Perry's, he wouldn't have to commute. There are only so many units you can build above Casa Manana, or, you know, I'm sorry, units. So nobody is proposing to change the design standards. And I, I just had to get that off my chest, because we work really, really hard to give you what you want, and I feel like it's not registering. So, thank you.
I, I want to...
I'd like to follow up on that.
May I make a comment for, I would just wanna remind the public that we've closed the public comment at this period, so, um, please refrain from speaking out, no, we, but we, we let everyone have a chance to speak. So it's now, it's our turn to respond to you. And so I'd appreciate if you could just let us, let us speak and no more public comment.
Thank you. Uh, I, I would like to follow up and say that, uh, while this is complex, it isn't rocket science. And I think that there's a lot of misinformation that people are buying into. A couple of examples, I'll give you just a couple of examples. into. A couple of examples. I'll give you just a couple of examples. This has nothing to do with the governor's crazy housing proposal. Nothing to do with it. It has nothing to do with Wincup. No one is proposing a Wincup here. Someone mentioned the multitude of housing units that are being brought in. There's not a single housing unit being approved with this action. Someone else said the rezone of the central commercial would allow for Wincup projects to come in here. I challenge anyone to find that in the documents. It simply is not true. It's misinformation that people are passing along out of fear, or, I'll leave it at that. But a couple of other things. No one is trying to get rid of Good Earth. We love the Good Earth. We'd like to keep them forever. This has nothing to do with getting rid of Good Earth or Casa Manana. This is not a housing policy document. This is not a housing policy document, with the exception that a commercial property could build a little apartment upstairs. That's it. How many could that be?
Yes, it's us.
I'm speaking, please. I did not interrupt you, and I would appreciate being allowed to finish. Someone said that this plan threatens, "Our only in Fairfax, that our redevelopment plans are ruining the town." This action has nothing to do with this. I found it interesting. Someone said that they love having their children play where they play today, that they would miss out on playing when we eliminate all these potential uses. The only uses that are no longer being allowed are formula businesses, like a Jack-in-the-Box. Would anybody like a Jack-in-the-Box in downtown? Big-box stores. Would anyone like a big-box? How about Costco? Should we bring Costco into downtown? These are the only businesses not being allowed. This is different. They used to be allowed in the highway commercial. Gas stations. Would someone like a new gas station to come into our vacant lots in the downtown district? We don't think so. So we said, okay, no more new gas stations. Warehouses. How many of you folks would like a big warehouse right downtown? We thought that that would be terrible. So we said, no warehouses downtown. What we encourage are pedestrian walkways, improved streets, architectural character that's in keeping with what's already here. I don't understand where people get the idea that, and where are these children playing? In formula businesses, in big-box stores, in warehouses, in gasoline stations? I'm sorry, we will not let children play there. This, the other misconception, and some people are honestly confused, and I'm afraid some people are adding to the confusion. This has nothing to do with the town center plan. The town center plan is something else. It's a whole other series of workshops. It's a different focus. That's where everyone can come together and talk about what do you want in your town center plan? How would you like to see it improved or not? So this has nothing to do with the town center plan. We are not changing height limits. We are not creating a Fairfax Disneylandia. And we've showed you the charts of the only things not allowed. Everything else is allowed. Frankly, I don't understand, and I'm afraid that there's another agenda happening that's just a no, 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 no. Well, I'll leave it at that.
One thing I might want to say, as a volunteer who's been participating, and, you know, there is a space on the planning commission, by the way, who's been participating in low-cost housing committee, planning commission for years, and I know we have others who are more veteran than I, and I can tell you, none of this is cookie cutter. None of this is coming down from some god up in the state or US government or any organizations that aren't, none of this is happening. This is a homegrown ordinance. This is a homegrown general plan. None of this comes from anything except the general state laws that require certain basic things. And I can tell you, my theme throughout has been, we do things our way. We're still doing this our way. We're doing this, our staff is amazing. This ordinance is so clear compared to the one we started with in October of 2015. We've had six hearings. I don't know if you've all been in attendance of those, but if you had, you would be absolutely familiar with everything. So I'm inclined to approve this ordinance recommendation to the town council, in spite of the fact that we've had a lot of, as has been said, misinformed statements and very good opinions. I mean, one of the things I absolutely agree with is our traffic density is appalling. Another thing I have to say I agree with is we must be careful of our town character. We had music here since Irving, Berlin. We've had art here since God knows when, since the Mewox started writing, drawing pictures of the deer on the rocks. Oh, we don't have our town symbol anymore, but, you know, it's the deer in the forest. We want to keep things that way. That is the basis of why we wrote for years, since October 29, 2015, November 15, 2015, January 21, 2016, you were all invited, 2/25/16, 4/26/16, 5/26/16, and today, with legal counsel working with staff carefully to make sure the town character would be preserved in this really complex rezoning that is designed to keep this town the way it is, as much as possible. But we have this overlay of state law that you must be aware of, since there seems to be, everybody believes that's dictating this. In some ways, that is true. We have to have, a density arena has to be applied here, but we're doing it a very careful way, so that we don't build three-story buildings that would be outsized, so that we don't build stuff that you don't want to see. So that's the general comment I have, and I'm inclined to vote approval of this recommended ordinance. Thank you.
I guess what I'd like to say, as someone who's been sitting up here for about 10 years now, there were a lot of comments about the planning process, and slow it down, don't rush into this, we just heard about this, why are you here, why are we here doing this? Let's talk about our vision first before putting it into practice, and let's talk some more. And as someone who's been up here, both talking about our community vision for 10 years, and then working on implementing or applying our town code. So we have a town vision, which we spent many years talking about and writing and crafting together through our general plan. And that is the holistic approach and thinking about what do we want for our town. And then it gets codified into our town laws. And then those town laws are what we interpret when we have differences with the law, or we get projects come before us to see, does it fit with the way that our vision translated into law, into a project? And we've been talking a lot. And I do think it's time for us to start walking. And because it's, and walking doesn't mean we stop talking. So planning is a spiral process. It's a process. It's not an end. It's always a process. It's an ongoing process. And what you codify today, you can revisit tomorrow. And I keep thinking that change, a lot of people talked about the traffic that we're experiencing now. And when we ask, how much have we really built, expanded in terms of our land use planning? It's not that much over the past 10, 20 years here in Fairfax. And yet, we're seeing this traffic impact on us. We're seeing change happen to our town that feels uncomfortable, and that we don't want this change to be happening to our town. And yet, the change is happening even though we haven't done any planned change. And it feels like change can either happen to us, or we can guide and facilitate that change and make it what we want. But if we do nothing, if we just sit around and talk to each other, change will happen to us. Santa Rosa will grow, and people will drive through here. Things will happen around us and to us. And so when we say that what we're trying to do is put in place tools for us to guide and be able to say, what do we want? So when someone comes in with a project, we can say, I'm sorry, that doesn't fit here, because we've already articulated what we want for our town. If we don't articulate that, if we go on a project-by-project basis without having articulated what we want, we've got nothing to stand on to make decisions. We've got no criteria that we have collectively come to, to be able to say, does this work, does this not work? So what we're talking about is setting out that collective criteria, so that when projects come before us, we can discern whether we want it or not. And that it's not, this is actually a tool for the public, because it's not just up to these seven people up here, or the five town council, to say, I like it or I don't like it. I can't imagine that the public would want to have no criteria in place and leave it completely up to the subjective whim of these seven people or the five people in the town council without having had some input. So the planning process is a way for the town citizens to have input, and not just leave it up to us to choose what we feel like on a month-to-month basis. So, and we've been taking input, and that we've been taking input all the way along. We always get input, and we always get new input, and we will take it into consideration. And I've learned new things tonight that I, if we were going to go through this, I would go through and I would say, that was a good idea. I think we ought to maybe look at that. So I don't think, so change is, so change is always happening, and it's always a process. And it's never too late to show up and say what you feel. And we have to, at some point, say, this is good enough, let's pass it on, and then we'll look at it again later if we want to, or if somebody brings some new information to us. Everybody is always going to be jumping into the middle of a process. So I think we need to continue on with that, and I do think we should walk our talk. And I can go through, if we're going to go through this in any amount of detail, then I would address some of the specific things that came up, but that's my general feeling.
Amy, do you have something?
Yeah, I kind of do. So I want to start by thanking everybody who came and spoke. Again, I agree with Katie that it's just really fabulous, and everybody else who said so, to have this community who's really engaged. And I think we all appreciate that and want more of it. I also want to thank Katie and Jim and Linda, who've done an incredible job and explained what I think may not be rocket science, but is a lot of layers, that we got to keep a lot of mental balls juggling in the air while we look at this. I personally, I want to ask, I guess restate the last question that we heard from the public, which is, what happens if we put this off for a month? Is there a downside? Because I do think there was a sort of a short timeframe before tonight to get the staff report, even for me, you know, to be able to review it with this fine-tooth comb, as you know, I like to review things with. So I'm just asking, is there a downside for a month delay to the August planning commission meeting to further, you know, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. Yeah, and I guess to my fellow commissioners, you know, I've been involved in the work on the preparation of the general plan, and watched us kind of go through the backward somersaults we had to do to deal with us rushing something through previously in this town that probably needed a little bit more breathing room before it was going to be evaluated properly. And, you know, I think we've raised some questions here. I'm happy to go through the detail that you're talking about, Shelley, in terms of some of the issues that came up that sparked sort of like, hmm, is that the way that works? I think that that would be worthwhile for us to kind of go through very specifically some of those issues. I do have concerns still, Norma, about the governor's bill. I know that the town council actually wrote a letter taking a position that they wanted to maintain as much local control as possible. And I think that, you know, even though we can't necessarily control what the state is going to do, we have to keep our eyes open and understand what's going on on those levels in terms of how it's going to potentially implicate what we're doing. And I think that if we come back next month, I would ask for better maps. I think that what you showed us on where the CC and CH zones are is a relatively small piece of a larger map of the town. And if you could focus down, just so we're really looking at exactly, okay, it's this building to this building, so people aren't confused as to what we're talking about, because I think that's part of the problem here, is that we don't have a good enough description of what specific parts of the downtown area we're talking about with this change. And so I'd like to see basically a closer eye view of that zoning change in a demonstrative exhibit. Talk about lawyer. And I also think, you know, Katie's done an excellent job in walking us through it, but the public, I think, deserves a little bit more time to digest it and walk through it, too. And maybe if we could give them that time and some, a little bit clearer diagram of what it means, I think that would be helpful. For, you know, I also think that we need this public engagement. Every single one of you that is not on the volunteers, that is not a member of a committee or a group in this town, needs to step up and get on those groups and get on those committees, get involved in the general plan implementation committee, read the land use town center elements of the general plan, and participate in a discussion. We can modify our general plan four times a year. Right now, what we're doing is implementing land use goal number seven in the general plan. It's preserve community and neighborhood character. That's exactly what you guys are talking about. It says, preserve and enhance the community's small-town scale and character. The existing village character of the commercial center of the town designated as the town center area shall be maintained and enhanced. Additional commercial development outside of the designated town center area shall be discouraged, except for limited neighborhoods serving uses. We're supposed to map and describe the town center plan area as the commercial core of the town, and rezone all commercial highway zone to central commercial zone, and revise the town and rezone all commercial highway zone to central commercial zone and revise the CC zone as appropriate. That's what we are doing. So, if people don't like that, they need to say to the town, we need to amend the general plan. And we can do that four times a year. And if people got together and said, you know what, we don't like your rezoning, the CC to CH, whatever, CH to CC, then, you know, change the general plan. Because right now, what we're doing is implementing something that had a great deal of public involvement all along the way, and this was what came out of that. So, there is some sense of frustration from people who participated in meetings in 2006 and 2007 and 2008 and 2009 to get to 2016 and have people going, what do you mean you're doing that? So, you can understand how some people might react to that. But that doesn't mean you can't change it because you do have the power, especially in a town like this, where we want to hear, even at the last minute, what you have to say. Okay? That's just my thoughts. I also wanted to go back to something that we were talking about earlier, Phil, which was your concerns about fueling stations. So, if we do get into the details, that's one of the areas I want to talk about. I also want to review the parking of the less than 500-square-foot units, even though I totally think I'm still on the same page you are, Shelley. Those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Can I ask a question? Jim, can you explain to the public the next step, the process?
Yes.
How many times will this
Yes.
come before the public before it is official?
Right. If, when, if and when you pass this up to the town council, you don't actually adopt an ordinance. The elected officials of the town on the town council adopt the ordinances. You make a recommendation to the town council via a resolution that one has been drafted for you tonight. If you look on the bottom of the resolution, it actually says the mayor signing it with the clerk signing it. The resolution's done by the town. The process would be if and when you pass a resolution recommending the town council consider this draft ordinance, it would have a first formal hearing at the town council, and that would be a noticed meeting and a public hearing. And if it was passed in the first reading, there would have to be a second reading, and it would have to be at a normally scheduled town council meeting. And then, after the second vote where it was adopted, the ordinance would go into effect 30 days after the second reading. So, again, you make the recommendation to town council. The town council would conduct not one, but two public hearings. Public would be notified, and the exact same exercise that happened tonight would happen at the actual adoption stage.
Can the, if the town council wants to take more time than two meetings, so they have a first hearing, they take public input, they discuss it, they realize, you know what, we need to discuss this some more, they can have, they can continue it as many times as they see fit before they do the second and final reading, correct?
Yes, and edit it along the way.
So, they can edit, so we just make recommendations, they can change it, edit it, all of those kinds of things? Because, is that true?
They can, and they can also send it back to, they can also send it back to you if there are substantial changes that would need to be reviewed by the Planning Commission again. So, they'll have a chance to look at it, and if they substantially change it, it would come back to you all for a further recommendation back to them.
Right. And let me just, since it was brought up in terms of change, maybe brought up changing the general plan, there are three approaches to modifying the general plan. It can come with, from the community through an application to modify the general plan. This is per our code. It can come from the Planning Commission recommending a change to the general plan, or it can come from the town council. If it came from the town council, they would send it down to you to chew on, digest with the public, make your best learned decisions, and then send it back up for adoption. But it comes from the public, you, or the town council. But no matter where it's coming from, those three entities, it goes through you.
I wonder if we can get an answer to the gentleman in the front row with the brown shirt, I forget his name, who asked, you know, what if this pending ordinance passes and we don't do this now? Are we somehow locked into some horrendous, and I'm not familiar, maybe you can answer that. I'm not familiar with the pending ordinance statute, so can you address that question? Thank you.
So, you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the question was, if the current version of the governor's by right housing proposal passes into law, what will be the point of doing this rezoning right now?
No, I think, I think the, no, I think we don't want to
He's clarifying the question, so we answer what was asked.
Well, I think the question was, correct me if I'm wrong, okay? I think the question was, if we don't do this exercise and do this rezoning in some form like we're talking about here, and this law that's pending might pass, will that, I think the question is, will that then preclude us from making a law like we want to make it and be stuck with some kind of horrendous state statute that we have to comply with?
Or would we be worse off in any way?
Right. Would we be worse off? And while I'm talking, let me say, thank you all for coming out. We need this input. This is the whole purpose of having hearings. Why would we hold a meeting here if nobody came, you know? It's your input that we need to hear. And when projects come up that someone, a whole bunch of people oppose, please show up. Because if you don't like something after the fact, there's not much we're going, you know, we can really do about it. So, please do show up. Thank you. So, the question.
I was going to try to pull it up. I don't know if we have internet access on this computer, so people could actually see the language of it in its most current form. And I don't think, yeah, I don't think we can pull it up here.
Well, if, you know, depending on what you do, we can get into that either at this level or at the council level to have a more thorough vetting of that discussion.
Right. Apparently
I was hoping we could put it up here for folks, and yeah.
No, if the town attorney is not familiar enough with the, we'll revisit that then. I just wondered if there wasn't a quick, easy answer to that question, but if there isn't, we'll just, we can move on.
I don't think there's a quick and easy, quick and easy answer. The slightly longer answer is that if that bill passes, it's going to be bad for local agencies, it's going to be bad for towns and cities that want to continue to exercise as much discretion as they can. It is an attempt to roll back our local land use authority, and what we're trying to do with the ordinance is exercise that authority so we have our zoning in place that reflects what we want as directed in our general plan. So, if the commission likes, we can do an analysis of what impact the most recent version of the trailer bill would have on the status quo and on the amended ordinance, but it would be a little longer exercise.
And there's some nuances involved. For example, this is the policy, as you pointed out, Mimi, of the town's general plan. And as Katie mentioned earlier, it's state law to bring the zoning ordinances into compliance with the general plan's policies that have been created by the town. So, I think the gentleman's question was, if we don't do this, then there ain't the 53 units we're modeling that then can be plugged into by right. But that's not, that's just looking at the zoning ordinance. It's already modeled in the general plan, which is the blueprint for the town. So, we sort of, you know, we're required to bring the zoning ordinance into compliance with the general plan. And frankly, in the strict interpretation from HCD, we're out of compliance now, and that does give the town some exposure. So, there's, it's a minefield, no matter what you do. The best thing, I think, is what Commissioner Green was saying, and Mimi also, we have a plan, we're implementing that plan. And if you wait long enough, there will be another uptick in what happens to communities that don't comply. And I take great satisfaction in your comments that this was a homegrown approach, and the other comments from the commissioners, that this is trying to accomplish a lot of what we've heard is angst tonight.
I had a process question or suggestion for our commission with respect to getting community participation. And in my experience, and as you've seen, we've had many meetings here with an empty audience where people haven't showed up. And typically, most people often don't show up at the Planning Commission level and do show up at the town council level. So, while I was hearing a lot of, slow it down, don't approve this tonight kind of things, I'm wrestling with the fact that if we do recommend it to the town council, then it goes before them, which tends to get more attention among the community in general. So, what I'm wrestling with is if we get it to a good enough format where we're feeling pretty good and say, well, yeah, they might want to tweak it, they might want to edit it, there's a part of me that feels like if we recommend it and put it up to the council to discuss, they can discuss it as long as they want, and that that often is where more people are paying attention. So, I'm wrestling with that idea of saying, if we recommend it to the town council, maybe that would actually engender more public participation than if we keep it down here at the Planning Commission level. And I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts on that.
I agree.
I disagree.
Could you tell me?
Yeah, I mean, I think right now, here we have a nearly full room, which is just ipso facto evidence that people are engaged at this level. And I think rather than kick something up to the town council, they'd probably appreciate it if we were the ones to filter this feedback before we give it to them.
I definitely think we can filter this feedback. I'm just, I, we've also had empty rooms, and so there was a part of me that was saying, we did get a lot of attention and a number of people here tonight, and in the past, we haven't. And generally speaking, they do have a lot more attendance and attention, so.
Can I just, sorry, can I just say one thing? This is a wonderful public process, and I echo the appreciation for everyone being here and being part of it. And I understood, I thought you eloquently expressed how there could be some frustration along the way. I do think it's important, though, for the folks in the public that have genuine concerns to try to wrap their heads around the very complicated issues that we're dealing with and trying to achieve. There will be a decision point at some time. And I don't think you're going to get all people to agree or all people to understand it, and I'm not sure that the misinformation that unfortunately sets things back will stop. So, there will be a decision point, and I'm sorry to sound somewhat skeptical, but I think there are concerted efforts afoot often to just waylay the process rather than do something. And I would just like to echo what you said, Shelley. I've been in this business for a while, and we are going through extreme changes in the Bay Area. And the only thing that does not change, we've talked about it, the only thing that doesn't change is change. And if you don't get out in front of that train of change and guide it, it blows you over, sort of like the traffic on Sir Francis Drake. So, in terms of land use, I think you all understand how this is actually a homegrown approach that's trying to meet many of the concerns that have been voiced and many of the fears that I'm afraid have come from misinformation. And I think that will continue.
Look, the only thing we have to fear is fear itself. Someone else said that originally, but it's true here. I mean, what we want to do, if we continue this for another month, what I would like to see is everybody here read the proposed ordinance carefully so that when you come back, if we continue this, you are educated because you've said you don't understand it, you don't, so just take a pencil, read this through, question mark, question mark, please do that, because more specific questions on things, the better. If we're going to be honing it in, in the Planning Commission here, but we want you all back with an educated opinion, and hopefully, we can explore your question, because that's a very interesting question about this proposed state law. And I just want to say, you know, and recently, I was asked, this is pertinent, about you all being here, recently, I was asked by someone, what are you doing about those redwoods downtown? And I said, I'm doing nothing. What would you like us to do? And that's the answer to that question. What would you like us to do? So, please study this if we continue it. Study it, read it, and come back educated so we know where we all stand on the same page.
So, I basically agree with what's been previously stated, and I think the issues that were brought up by the public, we discussed in our six meetings, but I also, I personally wish I had more time to have a look through the document. And compare with my six, my notes from the six meetings that we had to look through all this, I mean, I'd rather err on caution and maybe making, doing tweaks to make it better, and, you know, and then we could send it up to the council, but then if they want to tweak it and bring it back to us, I'm good with that, too, because I want it to be the best document that we can, that we can put together. But I'm also good if the commission wants to just go ahead and send it up to council now. So, maybe we just do an informal poll now, decide if we, do we want to make a decision now, or do we want to, do we want to work a little bit longer tonight?
I'm confident that this ordinance draft reflects what the public is asking for, sufficiently for town council to tweak if they need to here and there. But, and can I ask, Jim, when is the next town council meeting?
August 3rd.
August 3rd.
And I don't believe there's time to take it August 3rd. I think it would be in September because it would have to be noticed tomorrow to make the August, and it's not going to get noticed tomorrow.
So, it will be September before?
It would go to council, yes.
Okay, so.
And it'd be up to the, you know, purview of the manager and the clerk, but that would be the earliest it could go is in September.
Okay, so that's a pretty good chunk of time to study up and bring questions before the council and hopefully have them addressed. But I personally feel confident that this draft reflects what the public is asking for.
Norma, how do you feel?
I would be comfortable moving this along to the council at this point.
Well, as I said earlier, and as you know now, of course, clearer, we can send this on to the town council, which I'm still inclined to do, and you all study this carefully, please, and come back to the town council and ask pertinent questions. That is the essence of democracy also, is an education. So, I'm sure that all of you can get this entire staff report online, correct, in the town website? If you can't, I would ask staff that if they could receive an email from any of you who can't find it, that they could send it to you. Is that, is that okay? You should all have this. But I would move it on to the town council, you know, you've got two months as it is, September hearing.
So, I guess I was the one that put that out there. I would, I would support moving on, however, there are, I've been going through a number of the comments, or all of the comments, and trying to pull out some of what I felt were some, some of the comments that made me sit back and go, hmm, maybe we want to have a bit more discussion about that. You had mentioned the parking for the 500-square units. There was some question about offices, medical, professional, where they're located, back, front. That was, I felt, a substantive, some comments that made me want to go back and maybe have that conversation here tonight. And then, some comments around our prior conversations around automotive uses in the town and not allowing them versus maybe allowing some of them with a conditional use permit as opposed to just disallowing them. I listened to that, and that did strike me as something that I would like to have a further conversation. So, those were the three things at this point that I that I would like to maybe have a conversation about tonight, and then I'd be more comfortable moving on.
And just, I know you're all deciding on how to go here, but you also can pass it up with those highlights for them to focus on.
Yeah, I guess I just have, I don't understand why the rush, you know. We have had six meetings to go through this and deliberate amongst ourselves. There's still a couple fine tuning that I think we ought to be talking about. So I asked Jim, you know, if we waited a month, is there, you know, some sword going to come down? No. So because we had a short time period after we got the staff report, because the public had the same short time period, I would just ask for us to allow another month before we give this our blessing and send it up to the Town Council for their review. And I think, you know, given the outpouring of, you know, interest that we've seen tonight from the public, that, you know, it behooves us to kind of take a breath and allow this process to continue. I don't think it's going to get derailed, so I just don't understand what the rush is.
Okay, so it seems like the commission is in support of passing it up to council, but I think maybe we should spend a little bit of time to discuss those three topics that Shelley brought up, possibly tweaking a little language, and then we can maybe pass it up to council at that time.
So I would look, I mean, I'll just jump into that, if that's where we're at. On the automotive that people brought up, I would be comfortable on our table, on the automotive, adding back in the vehicle equipment and repair item as a conditional use permit. And, ah, yeah, I'm on page 15.
I would just bring up that, I think it was the whole Chevron project and how the reaction that we got from members of the town that got us to where we were in this document as far, we got the input from town that we didn't really want any more gas stations in the central commercial. So we were responding to public comment at that point.
And I think that highlights... Here, we're back. No, I think what that does is it highlights the public process, where we're going to have different people show up next time. We had people showing up saying, "We don't want any more gas stations, don't allow it," and we responded to that. And tonight, we heard a lot of people saying, "Don't get rid of our automotive fix-it shops and make uses that are already here nonconforming." So a use permit means that it would come back before us for changes, so that's balancing out those two opinions that we got.
And are you just suggesting that with respect to the gas stations? I mean, the question came up with respect to the Good Earth. It came up with respect to the auto washing facility, you know, that we were potentially making nonconforming uses out of a number of different. So your comment that you don't necessarily want to make the gas stations nonconforming, I'm asking about the other types of uses, such as the auto washing or the 5,000 square feet for the Good Earth, if you're also questioning that.
So I believe the auto washing, is the auto, the washing, so the issue was the Good Earth, because it's more than 5,000 or anything, and the service station, so the list was the wash, the Good Earth.
Can we not review something over 5,000 with a use permit?
That was what the intent was, when it's a large area, that we thought that that type of use needed a use permit. It wasn't that, it wasn't permitted. It was that we wanted to use, that type of use to need a use permit, so that we could more finely tune what was happening within that large of a square footage.
So that issue only comes up with the things that are prohibited? Okay.
Right. Town attorney, may I, I forgot your name, I'm sorry. May I ask, Katie, I'm sorry, can I ask you a question? Is there some language in the proposed resolution that recommends the ordinance that says that exactly what was mentioned here, that if a use is not permitted and someone purchases that business and wants to continue that use, that they can, is there any specific language in the proposed resolution that says that?
There is not any specific language in that regard, because that's a general principle of law. So we haven't restated generally applicable principles that would apply in any situation. If the commission liked, we could certainly add a recital to the commission's resolution, you know, whereas the Planning Commission makes this recommendation to the Town Council on the understanding and the advice of legal counsel that currently existing uses that are rendered nonconforming by adoption of the ordinance will be granted legal nonconforming status with all rights pertaining thereto. I mean, you know, we could add something like that.
Right. It's like this, when you do bylaws for a corporation, it's multiple pages, it's completely optional, it's just recommended so that the corporation knows how to operate. So here, we have a public who has expressed confusion, concern, you know, all kinds of issues. They're not sure how to operate. I think we need to, where language could be put in this proposed ordinance, that even though it's redundant of state law, the public doesn't know that. So we need to...
The reso or the ordinance?
Into the reso, and ultimately, I would recommend into the ordinance that changes the zoning, that, you know, especially in that particular instance, we put in either a recital of the state law language or a referral to the statute and the language. But erring on the side of, you know, try not to be wordy about it, but erring on the side of realizing the public really doesn't know what section, you know, whatever you might pick a government code in here, 15000 really means. They don't know that. So it would be a good idea for the users out there, i.e. our public, to understand this better so that they know what Public Resources Code 2166, 21166 might mean. And so that, you know, some of this language maybe could be put back in there. And I know it might make it a bit longer, but for the sake of education, I think, one thing I heard here is we need to educate the public better. So that's a recommendation.
And do I have consensus from the commission on that recommendation?
That would be, that seems to be acceptable to the best of the commission.
And depending on the outcome of whether you decide to pass it up, it sounds like if you do decide to pass it up, then you would leave it up to us to craft that language on your recommendation as it goes up.
And along those lines, maybe back to your question about the automotive, the washing and anything else, I think then, from my reading of it and understanding of where it applies, the repair, vehicle repair, the washing and the service station are current uses in, there's current businesses in the CC zone that have those uses, and I would like to see them be able to have a conditional use permit, not disallowed. I would add to that, that there'd be a review, when it goes to Town Council, I would like to have it go to Town Council with a review of this, all existing businesses, and if there are other businesses in town that fall within any of these non-allowed uses, that they consider making them with conditional use permits, so that we don't disallow uses that they're conditional use permit.
Okay. And do I have consensus from the commission on that suggestion?
Well, I have a question. Now, if a use is prohibited and somebody wants to come in after, let's say, a gas station closes down and is no longer operated as a gas station, and somebody comes in and wants to open a gas station there, if it's a prohibited use, they have to get a zoning ordinance change. And if it's a use permit required, they can come in, but do they have sort of a right to operate it as a gas station? Is it totally within our discretion? Do they have some sort of assumption that they're going to be granted the use permit at that point? I guess that's my nagging question.
So that's a good question. If there is an existing use permit, and, for example, the business changes owners, the new owner steps into the shoes of the previous owner and has all the rights and privileges the previous owner had. So now you've got a use permit with whatever rights have vested under that use permit, and we just take you from there?
I don't think that's my question.
Okay.
So take the Chevron, no longer operated as a gas station.
Right.
Now, if this area is zoned that service stations are prohibited, okay, that's different from if it's zoned where a service station has a right to come in or potentially can operate if they get a use permit.
Right.
Now, let's just think about that now. If they come in because they can get a use permit, is there some kind of assumption that as a property owner, they have a right more than if they had come in to get a zoning change ordinance because it was prohibited and they couldn't even get a use permit? Does somehow the idea that it's use permit give them more of a right to undertake that business, or do we, as a Planning Commission, have like discretion to say, "Yeah, you could have got a use permit, but not today, we don't feel like it"?
So if, for example, Chevron came in and wanted to restart a gas station at that location, and that operation has been out of business for many years now, is not being marketed as a gas station, there's no continuing right to claim any benefits under that old use permit, then if the town code says, "No gas stations are permitted," then you, property owner, don't get any special rights because you once had the use permit. You still need to seek a zoning amendment if you want to try to get that permitted again. Where this idea comes in is where there's an uninterrupted operation of a business or a use that's no longer permitted, and we don't have that lack of interruption there.
I think what she's asking, though, is if we change it so that it's a conditional use permit, and they come back five years later, and it's on our table as a conditional use permit, what are the parameters under which we might have to allow them or not have to allow them? Like, what are the findings that you have to make to either let them use it or not let them use it under a conditional use permit?
They're still starting from scratch. So it would just be like a brand-new use permit, that the old one had never taken effect. It's brand-new, and we consider it like any new one.
But does the fact that it's listed as a permissible use with a use permit give somebody, it seems to me it gives them some right to say, "Hey, I'm entitled to this use permit," regardless of what the use was previously, just the fact that it's listed as a permissible use with a permit? I mean, this is my question. Does it give somebody more authority to say to the Planning Commission, "You guys have less discretion to give me this permit than I'm asking for, because it's listed right here that I can get a use permit for this activity"?
Through the chair, I do not believe we have the authority to list it as a conditional use, because it goes against the general plan and the current proposed zoning.
Okay, well, a couple of things. So first of all, what is our discretion? Do we start with the assumption that, yes, you get it unless we find fault, or do we start with the assumption that, no, you're not entitled to this unless we approve you? A conditional use permit means that the town has the authority to exercise its land use powers, so to look at the impact of the proposed use on the town, and use our criteria for issuing use permits to determine whether or not a proposed use is acceptable. It's not a matter of whether you start with a preference for or against, it's just, that's the scope of your power. That's the best I can tell you. For general plan purposes, as we sit here tonight, I honestly don't recall whether the general plan specifically prohibits gas stations, or if what you're thinking of is the general plan's direction to rezone all CH to CC and rezone accordingly, which is let go of some of those CH uses. So that may be where you're coming from.
It's a spirit that could be interpreted.
That's not a hard and fast directive like rezone CH to CC. We have a little more discretion there.
I think the general comments I heard from the public tonight was, they were concerned about the auto repair, and I think the car washing. They didn't so much bring, I think they didn't so much bring up the service station. So I think maybe doing the use permit for the, for those uses would still allow those to continue, and then allow us the discretion if we thought that was appropriate at that particular location or not. Does anyone else want to weigh in on that?
It's fine, except that they're still allowed to continue as an existing use, if it's not discontinued. So why, you know, we're making machinations that don't need to be there?
What were the other?
My only thought is that there are business here, there are small business here, you know, animal hospitals we put as conditional use permits, and we had conversation about not wanting to disenfranchise small business owners that are already here. And so I was feeling like auto repair and the washing, S and N auto, we heard, so I felt like that was, I heard that and I felt like that was a valid argument. I could let go of the service station, and the Town Council can choose to do what it wants with that one.
S and N, we definitely want to stay, sure.
I was just wondering, though, by creating a conditional use permit, are we also opening up the opportunity to set up, say, a washing machine next to Perry's, if it meets all the criteria? Or are we just talking about the existing locations? Because I don't think we have the authority to say, "Yes, you can get a conditional use permit, but it has to be, but it has to be here. It could be anywhere."
So here's a paragraph from another thing we were going to look at tonight on a conditional use permit, and it says, "The purpose of the conditional use permit process is to allow the proper integration of uses which may only be suitable in certain locations or only if the uses are designated in a particular way, Town Code 17.0300A. So in consideration of a conditional use permit application, the commission shall give due regard to the nature and condition of all adjacent uses and structures, to the physical environment of the proposed use, and to all pertinent aspects of the public health, safety, and welfare." So if I read that paragraph about conditional use permit approval processes, it tells me, you could make, that gives you the discretion... me you could make a, that gives you the discretion, if that's what you're looking for, that gives you the discretion to say, "Hey, wait a minute, a car wash doesn't fit next to Perry's Bar because it's not an integrated use and it's a public health, whatever." So.
No, I think we should keep car washes as not allowed, other than the, you know, Sir Francis Drake High School annual car wash, and which doesn't make much impact on us here either. I was, I think, I think what we need to do here is decide whether the type of use like S and N auto, which was the use brought up for that category, should be allowed a conditional use permit or not. And so that's what I would put to the, to the board here, and see if we can just come up with that idea, because we have two other, what were the other points you made?
The two other discussion topics were the parking for the small residential units and the location of offices. And you brought up the washing thing, so I don't know if you've, the car washes as being an existing use, whether or not we disallow it or conditional use permit.
Yeah, I was only trying to make sure I understood the rationale for revising the table with respect to, you know, light vehicle repair. You know, I don't know that we want a lot of car washes in Fairfax, so I don't really feel strongly one way or the other about whether it's a prohibited use or a, requiring a use permit. I don't think we'd be granting use permits for much. Now, is S and N, see, this is one of the problems that I have with the maps, Jim. S and N isn't even on this, is it? It is. It goes all the way to the end of Bellinas? Well, I really would like to see larger maps, if this goes up to the council or comes back to the planning commission, of the precise plan, because that was not at all clear. I bought a magnifying glass and I forgot to bring it. But the other question I had about the auto issues was something that Phil brought up early on in tonight's meeting about fuel servicing for electric. And I heard Jim saying, "Nothing in this would prohibit electrical refueling stations." But you had some wackadoodle recommendation for revising the definition of service station that I didn't understand.
No, as long as I got clarity that none of this no-vehicle stuff prohibited electric or, I think, hydrogen's coming to, refueling stations, I'm fine.
And I would just want to point out that these uses that we talked about that might be a use permit, that we would say that those are ones that are appropriate, like in the rear, you know, we don't want them along the frontage. But it could be appropriate at the rear of a, of a place. So anyway, that's, those same limitations that, that we discussed for like the industrial type uses.
For charging.
No, for like the, for vehicle repair.
Oh, thank you.
And possibly auto washing.
Thank you.
Through the chair, before we get too much further away, I want to clarify. So nothing in here prohibits vehicle charging stations. What would be prohibited currently is a service station, for lack of a better term, with multiple charging stations. So one single charging station isn't prohibited by this. And if we want to be very explicit about it, we could add that a charging station was, for an example, an accessory use to other permitted uses. That would be one way of being very clear about that. But if you're envisioning something like, you know, a Shell station with, instead of gasoline, charging stations, multiple, then we do need to make provision for that in here somehow.
Well, then, yeah, then, then we do need to make a provision for that, I think. Because what, what I, I have other inputs in my life. What I'm seeing happening is the gas stations are going to include two or three electric charging stations, perhaps. A restaurant may include two or three charging stations because that's, you're going to eat while you charge your electric car. Hydrogen's on its way, but let's not discuss that. It's all changing. Maybe one day we'll power our cars by solar, we won't have to worry about this. But the idea here is, early on in, in this discussion, the public was against service stations, the public was against the traffic. So, you know, what, what you do if you get rid of service stations and car service facilities in the town is you move traffic through a lot more. You just get it through because they want to get to San Antonio to refuel instead of being here. So that's kind of the thought, is to get rid of some of the traffic. We're also not trying to, Bruce isn't here, but one of his themes, and I agree with it, is trying to get rid of cars, period, and get people into, into public transport. So I'd like to see something modified here, yes, that, that would specifically allow a multi-electric or other, alternative fuel, let's call it, system to be here.
Through the chair, could that be couched under the auspices of some type of multimodal location where it would be, it could be in a parking lot or by a bus sta, well, our charging stations are at the parcade or at the Good Earth, which I think is a good way to place them rather than creating a gas station, electric charger business.
Right. So those uses that you're identifying are accessory to some primary use. And I think what Phil's talking about is something that's a standalone, commercial operation that offers that service. So I need some direction from the commission if you want to provide for, for that standalone service.
I, I was just going to say, I, I agree with making provisions for our town to have alternative charging, alternative vehicle support, energy stuff for them. I just don't know that it's going to look like a service station in the future. Like, those are commercial uses. You have to put your card in them and you have to pay for stuff. So even though they're in the parcade or on the street or wherever, they're still commercial businesses, they just don't look like what we think of as service stations. And I don't know that they will ever look like service stations. And I think the reason that you're saying that you would need to articulate them is because of the land use of a service station is cars driving in, pulling up to a thing and sticking a hose in, or sticking a plug or a hose or something into them and waiting a certain amount of time and then driving off. That's a land use. I don't know that that's what they're going to look like in the future. They could, like right now, they're in parking lots, they're all over the place. So I don't know that we need to recreate the service station to accommodate ways of re-energizing our vehicles.
Or they would be at people's homes, which is really the, the ideal standard.
And that, that is happening with photovoltaics, charging cars, and when the Eli Musk home battery comes around, that's going to change, be a game changer, too. It seems like you vetted this pretty well. We're not precluding charging stations. I would recommend you sort of, you know, let this conversation guide the council. And you still have two other items, or two other subjects, the office and the 500-square foot or below parking standards for upstairs units.
Through the chair, just before we leave this, I want to point out, a service station was inadvertently listed twice, so I'm just going to delete one of those. So a line is disappearing here, and I just wanted to draw attention to that before I did it.
Okay. Well, to answer the question, let me, let me ask you one more question. If, if a restaurant decided to put in a couple of charging stations, would that be prohibited here?
It is not expressly prohibited here, but it is not made explicit that that is a permitted accessory use to that primary restaurant use. And if we would like to articulate that in our list of accessory uses, we could do that. So there was no question about it. That would be one way of addressing it, or you could just leave it to the discretion of the town to enforce that.
Yes, okay. I think that would be maybe the way to do that, would be to expressly say that it's an accessory use that would be permitted.
And if that's the case, through the chair, would that count as one of the parking spaces?
Well, yeah, that's a separate question. I mean, it is still a, a location where a car is being parked, that's.
But you can't park there unless you're charging your car.
That's the case in the Good Earth, by the way, where we have, I think, two.
So it may have parking ramifications.
Great segue into the parking question.
And can we just get consensus on this point?
Yeah, we need, we need direction for Katie on that.
So is the commission in agreement that this should be added to the list of accessory uses in the district? Yes.
Yes, I think so.
We are.
Yes, we're in agreement with that. So we're going to, we're going to make the vehicle equipment as a U with an L1 and leave service stations and automobile washing as not allowable? And now we can, that, that's what I've heard.
I'm sorry, you're changing which one to a U?
Vehicle equipment repair to a U with an L1.
Thank you.
And that's it. And then adding the permitted accessory use to allow charging stations as an accessory use.
Thank you.
I'm just surmising what I heard. So there's that change, the vehicle repair, and then permitted accessory use to allow charging stations.
Well, what is the, what is the under-vehicle equipment repair? What's the limited vehicle service? Does that mean?
That's just oil change and something, and the other one is like a fix-it shop.
Will that be U as well?
That's a good question. If you make a master category, a U, does it by default make the subcategory or a U? Are they all independent?
They're all independent. So if you wanted to allow vehicle equipment repair with limited vehicle service with a use permit, we would need to change that to a U as well.
Makes sense if we're going to do that.
Yeah, that's, I agree.
Yeah, that works.
Okay, I'm just going to say my preliminary piece about the affordable, or, or not the affordable, the, the units of less than 500 feet on the second floor of the new CC zone. And we went through a lot of discussion where we came up with the idea that if it was 500 square feet or less, you wouldn't need to have the required parking spot for an additional unit if your building, okay, building, that's a good word, already complied with the parking requirements for the use that was already going on in that building, right?
Commercial use.
The commercial use that was already going on, because arguably there wouldn't be residential yet, right? So as I recall, some of the things we thought about in coming up with that were what you talked about a little earlier, how, you know, if there is a situation where there's employees coming and parking, or patrons coming and parking at a particular commercial use and residences, residents that might be not there during the day, but there in the evening, that there seemed to be potentially a symbiotic kind of relationship, and that made sense. I think we were also really struggling with the balance between wanting to, as Jim said, incentivize having these smaller units, because we think the size will naturally help to keep the cost of the units down. And sometimes people are, you know, put off by creating a unit because of the additional parking, and we have so little area in downtown to create more parking. So I just wanted to summarize my recollection of how we got where we were on that one.
And actually, the shared parking, it's called shared parking in developments, that the daytime commercial use takes up the, the parking, and at night, nobody parks there.
I agree with that summary. How do you, how do you still, do you, how do you feel about that now?
I'm, I still feel comfortable, like we struck this balance, you know, and it might not be perfect. And in reality, it might, you know, at one particular place, might become kind of crazy, but who knows? Because I think you can't predict every conceivable scenario, and we want to kind of feel through this in a way that we're, you know, finding the best solutions, even if they're not absolutely perfect. So I haven't really heard anything that would suggest we deviate from what we decided, but I'm open to hearing it.
I agree with that. I did have a question, though, I'm not sure if I was at the meeting, where we talked about businesses that could not comply with the parking requirement for the commercial because of site constraints. And so in a case like that, but they do have the room to create two units upstairs, which we want to incentivize. What, how do we?
One of those units better be a garage upstairs.
A lift. Do these businesses have variances granted to them where they can do off-street parking? Or how do we deal with those scenarios?
Jim and I are looking at each other, hoping the other one will answer first. I don't think we have a great solution for that right now. It is simply a fact that there are some places that have real difficulties parking. It may just be the case that if you cannot fulfill your parking obligation in any of the currently available mechanisms, you're not going to be able to meet the development standards, and so you can't build that residential unit upstairs. That might just happen until we figure out a different parking mechanism.
Let me, forgive me, I'm getting a little foggy because of late hour. Would they be, would a variance be available to that applicant, under the way it's written?
So a variance?
Parking variance.
Right. So there are two different animals here. A variance is available under state law when you have a parcel or a piece of property that meets very specific criteria. You've got topographic issues that make compliance impossible, that type of thing. A variance would not be available. A parking variance, I don't know. I would have to go back and review the off-street parking regulations in the code to determine whether or not it would be possible to qualify for one. I don't know, as I sit here.
Okay, so that's one piece of it. The other piece of it is, that I, that you may or may not have been privy to, is that it's not something we want to add into this exercise of the draft, but subsequent to this happening, if in fact, we create a managed parking approach to town, or create a parking assessment district for those antiquated old sites that are wonderful, because they don't have parking lots and they've got street frontage, then they could buy into the parking assessment district, and that would, that would be a mechanism for them to provide the parking. And it is a physical parking location, and has, the money has to be applied to the solution of the parking issue. So we're headed towards that exercise. The council, in its wisdom, specifically did not want to tackle the managed parking or parking meter approach, if you will, or parking lots that are paid for through an assessment district in the development of the town center plan, because it would, they felt it would just take the whole weight of any other discussion away. It's not that we're not going to be talking about the principles of parking, or the deficit of, of truck parking, commercial truck unloading zones and things like that during that, but that will be a subsequent exercise after the town center plan to really look at the parking issue again. And that would be a place to revisit some of the policies, decisions you're making right now.
Okay, but for tonight, we are agreeing that if a retail commercial building can satisfy the parking requirement, then they, I'm sorry, the?
For the commercial.
For the commercial, then they will be permitted to?
Right.
Build a unit on the second story.
And I suppose they could get creative, even outside of a parking assessment district. If you remember when Mr. Lush was interested in bringing his Terrapin Landing here, he was going to use St. Rita's for the majority of his parking requirement. So I'm not sure that the parking would have to be on-site necessarily.
They could lease. They could lease space from another establishment. Okay.
And we do have a lot of parking in this town, when we're out of the parking that's obvious, that is sitting there empty on the weekends, in private hands, but public-private parking strategies are very viable.
And I don't know if our code currently permits that, or if the code currently says your off-street parking has to be provided on the property for which the approval is being sought.
Thank you for saying that. It probably does, and we probably have to amend that later.
So it would've been an option.
That's the exercise with the, looking globally at the parking.
Okay, so? I'm just not clear, then are we, are we doing some tweaks to the language?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm writing them down, because some of these are just.
Okay, because I just want to make sure when I review the final draft, that I have it right.
So we were looking at D.
Right.
And notwithstanding the parking requirements shall be, one parking space for each residential, shall be one parking space for each residential unit that is 500 square feet or less? No.
No. There shall be no additional parking requirement for each residential unit that's 500 square feet or less, if the underlying commercial use meets its parking requirements.
That leaves offices.
Offices. I don't see anywhere in the ordinance that prefers offices over any other particular use, and this has been brought up by the public and needs to be clarified for them. But offices are supposed to be in the back or on the top floor, if there's a professional office. So that already limits them quite a bit. So I don't, I don't really, bottom line, I don't see any need to change the office designations in the, in the ordinance as written.
And I also believe that we, they need a use permit if they did want to go into the main street frontage, but maybe there's a place we can, in the resolution or something, say that we're trying to encourage the village character with, we do, but maybe we need to emphasize it more, I don't know.
Yeah, I actually, I did have some language on the?
L2.
L2. Yeah. So I had, I actually just strengthened L2, which would be the, if an office use wanted to ask for a conditional use permit to move to a street frontage. There's two provisions there right now, about it being compatible with the existing character and uses in the area, and not deter pedestrian traffic in the vicinity. So if there was, if we had any ideas of either oomphing that up or strengthening it to really set the bar even higher, my thought was to add the words, "is compatible with the existing character and uses articulated in," and then reiterate the purpose, because if you read the purpose of this statement, it's actually really clear about pedestrian, retail, storefrontage stuff. So it would say, "is compatible with the existing character and uses articulated in 17.100.101 (purpose) and existing, and the, uses existing," oh, I'm sorry. "Is compatible with the existing character and uses in the area and the purpose as articulated in 17.101.11," which says? 17.100.010, which says? No, 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 this is the new one here, the 17. If you look in here, it's in here. Sorry. It's in the very beginning, "which articulates the purpose of the commercial CC zone."
I think it starts on page 12, at the bottom.
Thank you. Which says that the central commercial zone is the central business district and the retail commercial heart of the town. So right, that first paragraph says, "retail commercial heart of the town. It should contain the most valuable land and structures on a square foot basis. The development of the commercial zone caters and invites pedestrian traffic. Consequently, storefrontages are intended to be continuous and to enhance the village character of the town. Uses should be scaled such that an automobile is not needed between them. Concentrated and varied retail and commercial activity." So, again, referencing back to that, I think adds additional barriers to putting non-pedestrian, non-retail, non-village character uses in the front for conditional use permit.
Right, that, that would be good. I mean, this is another instance, I think, where we need to actually articulate or summarize the language of the, of the ordinance, so the public understands more what it says. I mean, I think that, that's a key here. Another thing I would like to see in that, in L, oh my god.
L2.
L2 is just a, maybe a brief outline of the A through F, I think it is, findings that need to be made in that, in the section mentioned. Not, not that we don't want to be all redundant here, but we want to the public to really be educated in what these things are actually saying. So if we do that, then, then I'm concerned, you know, after hearing everybody, that, that they know that we have to make these other findings, and the bar is very high, if you read that ordinance. So I would urge at least a summary, perhaps, of that language, 17032060. You know, these are standard required findings, but I think A through D could be summarized there, to show the public, who isn't gonna look back at the ordinance, and they're not gonna do the legal research that we might do, to find out what those findings actually say. Just a recommendation there.
You all concur with that?
Sure.
Yeah.
So?
And I just want to follow up on Shelley's suggestion. So you were wanting to add the language, the reference to the purpose section, and the only reason I'm pausing it all is because that purpose language is supposed to apply to every use that's permitted or conditionally permitted? So by virtue of the fact that you're a conditionally permitted use, we've kind of already determined that, yes, you do do these things. So I'm struggling with how to capture your comment, because I think it's a really good one.
Well, it could be a footnote. It could be, it could be mentioned elsewhere in the, in the ordinance. It could actually be recited wholly as a, as an end note at the end of the ordinance, or something like that. I just, you know, this only comes from all those folks out there who are expressed lack of understanding, and I think a lot of that has to do with, I mean, I see this in other areas, lack of understanding due to, you know, code section XYZ being mentioned, but nobody's gonna look back at it and see what it really means, so they're completely confused.
That's a good point.
Just a reference in, in the ordinance might be great.
It, you know, it might be placed at the end, since we do have the Section 17 at the top of the categories, and then it could be copied again after the A through F. The Section 17 language that you were recommending?
The purpose language.
The purpose language.
We've got two different suggestions going on here. We've got Shelley's, and we've got Phil's. So Shelley was recommending the language about the purpose from 17.101.0. And Phil is referencing a summary of the criteria coming out of 17032060. So I just want to be very clear about what you're talking about, Norma, sorry.
I was referring to the, the central commercial zone, business district, retail commercial heart of the town.
So, so I guess what I, what I think we want to do is, we want to articulate, the purpose, as you said, articulates what you want to see throughout the whole zone.
Right.
But we've made an even further refined distinction between not just the purpose everywhere, but storefrontages. That storefrontages are within that purpose even more unique to things like retail and restaurants and pedestrian-oriented uses. We had discussions around, you know, things where people are coming and going frequently, because it creates that buzz and that hum, and that's where people meet and gather and do things, versus quieter things that people might, that don't come and go in terms of pedestrian use.
So since what we're doing here is adding an additional finding, that you'll have to make factual findings to support in the event you ever issue one of these use permits, could I suggest something like an additional finding that the proposed use activates the storefront usage in a way similar to a retail use? And then you have some criteria for judging it against. You have what we're hoping to accomplish, which is activating that area and not having it be a dead area, and you've got something concrete to judge it against. Does that capture your?
Yeah, I like the language of activates the storefront usage similar to a retail use, that, I think that characterizes it well. And then I would also add, "and is compatible with the existing character and uses in the storefrontages of nearby buildings," as opposed to just in the area.
Okay, you're gonna have to give that one to me again, just let me?
Sure. So the activates storefrontage uses similar to a retail use. I don't know if this is another one, but the one that's already there, the number one that says "is compatible with the existing character and uses in just the area," I was changing from "in the area" to "in storefrontages of nearby buildings." So it particularly calls out it being similar to uses in storefrontages, not just uses in the area. You could say storefrontages in the area, that's fine.
All right, does that capture what you're wanting? Compatible?
That works for me, to kind of give that added bar of conditional use requirements.
This is what happens when you get up at 4:30 in the morning. Storefront usages, there we go.
Okay, so I think we've gone through the, the amendments that we wish, so are we ready to make a motion now?
Can we take one minute as staff?
Sure.
And have a look to make sure there's no further direction?
Okay.
That we need from you? Thank you.
Particularly, while Katie's looking at that, there was, there were two, I had the friendly amendment on the two little places on the east side, that was at the end of the table, I think it was F, and you liked the language on that, so if you make a motion, if you could include that, you know what I'm talking about?
Jim, can we change that real quickly, so I make sure I write it down correctly?
Sure, sure. Forgive me, I'm trying to find where it is.
Hey, J.C.
Thank you. Okay, last box, F, yeah.
"Notwithstanding any other provision of the town code, existing single-family homes that maintain their residential character?"
Effective, as of the effective date of this ordinance, are conditionally permitted uses within the CC district and shall be included in any residential density calculations if they are returned to residential use.
Okay. Does that have the commission's concurrence?
You guys good with that?
Yes, I agree.
And there was one other one in the beginning, I can't remember exactly what it was.
We were talking about D, and I think that we've dealt with, with the parking.
Great.
I would like to bring something to the commission's attention. On page eight, under community uses, we have a definition for cultural institution, and that can actually be removed, because we already have an institution definition included in the code. So I'm just going to delete that. And the table correctly references institution.
I, I would, since we have a table referencing a typology, I think the typology should be in here, so if we already have a definition somewhere else, I would?
Move it here?
Move it here, so that everything that's in the table can be found in this definition section, and people don't have to go look for it someplace else.
Thank you.
And then, we, we already had our gas station, but there were two people in the very beginning who did specifically call out gas stations and auto repair. The second person who spoke, and Egger, Frank Egger, both specifically did call out gas stations and auto repairs, that we were creating them as non-conforming, and that they had a problem with that. So I'm fine leaving it the way it is, but we did say, oh, well, nobody said about gas stations, but we did have those two people specifically call out gas stations, and why are you making things non-conforming that are already part of our community? So I just went back on my notes before we finished.
Yeah, I think their impression was that we were gonna shut them down.
So can I just clarify, for vehicle equipment and repair, as well as vehicle and equipment repair with limited vehicle service, we don't have any additional regulations right now? And Regulation B says that permitted uses must be conducted wholly indoors unless otherwise indicated. Are those uses that you would want limited to indoors, or do you want outdoor repair being? Okay, thank you. So I'm adding a B.
And I would also add the one about the hazardous something or another? What was that one? L3. Since we're talking about automotive.
And I see what you're talking about there, but L3 only kicks in if you already have L2, and L2 lets you operate along storefrontages? So is, do we want these to be permitted potentially?
No, strike that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm not making the change as we sit here, because I'm gonna have to go and actually look at the language, but what I have not typed in tonight, but have written down here, is adding electrical vehicle charging stations as an accessory use. So I will make that change to Section 17 before we do anything else with this ordinance.
And I'll just repeat my request. I would really appreciate it if we did not send this up to the council right now, but rather agreed to agendize it for next month, and accept further public comment on it before we send it up. Yeah, so I'll move that we get this revision back from Katie at the August Planning Commission meeting, and take it at that point, whether we will recommend it to the council. Does anyone want to second that? Does anyone want to make another motion?
Yeah, I, I would, you know, with, with the proviso that, that what we decide here can be appealed, and it can be taken through the town council, and there's other venues, I think that we have hit upon five changes that we want to make to this, and I would like to make a motion that we recommend this zoning ordinance to the town council, with the changes that we've, that we've recommended here.
With the suggested changes, I would second that.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Let the record show us 5-1, with Mimi dissenting.
Okay, so at this?
I'm sorry, you guys, I need to leave.
Thank you, Norma, for sticking out with us.
So, go ahead, sorry, thank you, Norma.
So I guess, at this point, then, we'll, we're gonna move it, recommending it to go up to the town council for their? go up to the Town Council for their input.
That's correct. Katie, I think you can go home.
Thank you all so much.
We're just falling asleep right there.
Thank you so much, Katie, for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
So hopefully we have a quorum on the minutes.
Nope.
We don't? On any of them?
Well, the first one says Bruce, Norma, Shelley, and Laura, and since Norma left, we only have three.
Okay, and May?
So, on May, we have, I think, all of you here, or six of you, right? And so we have a quorum for that. Five of you were all there. Am I missing something? Bruce was not, right? So you can act on the 19th, any changes to the 19th?
And I have to say, the minutes clerk will be watching the tape. I'm not gonna try and capture all of yours. I'll try, but I probably won't, so if you could just speak loudly with any edits to the minutes.
Let me say something about these minutes. They're terrific, amazingly detailed.
Great.
Really easy to follow, and I'm not sure who prepared them, but thank you.
Bobby, who used to do them years ago and has come back to us, and she does send us some also, and she's grateful not to have to come late to late meetings. So, any changes to the May 19th?
Nothing, nothing I have.
How about we just go through them all before you approve what you've edited, or whatever you can vote on? How's that? You wanna go to the, is anyone off any from May 19th?
There's four of us here from June.
Well, we're still on May 26. And there need four, and Norma's not here, we don't have a quorum on May 26. So, excuse me, I'm, you're, I'm at May 26. There's no quorum on May 26. How about the 19th? We have a quorum on the 19th, so if there's no changes, you can pass the 19th. How about the 16th? We've got plenty. You can act on the 16th and you can act on the 19th.
I'll move to approve the minutes from May 19th and June, what did we say, 20?
16th.
June 16.
I have one change to June 16th, and that is on page nine. Commissioner Green provided the following comments. He referred to page four of the resolution, Condition Number Four, and suggested the following additional conditions. See, fire alarms be installed, and what I added, what I'm gonna add there is prior to occupancy, that was the recommendation, to have fire alarms must be installed prior to occupancy.
Got it.
Just those three words.
Okay. Everybody good with the 19th? I'm sorry, June 16th also?
I have to abstain.
I'm sorry, you have, please speak into the mic because Bobby's gonna rely on it.
I have to abstain, I wasn't there.
Ah, okay.
One more small thing on June 16th, page 12, where I talked about music in Fairfax. I said, "Music has a history in Fairfax," and I said, "at least going back as far as Irving, Berlin." So that, those words weren't in there.
Okay.
I happen to know that.
Okay. We there? May 19th and June 16th?
So I make a motion to approve the minutes of May 19th and June 16th? So, motion to approve May 19th?
Second.
Aye.
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 And June 16th?
Motion to approve minutes of June 16th with two changes I mentioned.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
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 All right. Thank you. That gets to my report, and I'm gonna be kind of quick. Yes?
Before you start, can I ask for a clarification?
Please.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I need a clarification from the commission. In, you said, "We're voting to move this along to council." You did not say, "We are adopting resolution thus and such." So can I get clarification in the form of another roll call vote, just to make it official? What the motion was, was the motion to adopt the resolution with the ordinance as amended by the commission on the dais tonight? If someone could clarify that for the record, that would be helpful.
The motion is to adopt Resolution Number 16-25 with the various changes that we recommended be made, and to recommend the ordinance to the Town Council.
And do we have a second?
We're going through it again. We're going through it again. Just do it again.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
Just dotting our i's here.
Okay, thank you, Katie, and thank you so much for coming over and doing this and being up senseful, and I guess the only silver lining is you won't have traffic heading back to the East Bay.
This is safe.
Yes, we're good, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna be brief, since the hour is late. First of all, I'm gonna get to the open space issue in a second, but I just wanted to say, in terms of transparency, the public brought up tonight, the whole thing of transparency, one of the things we started implementing with the General Plan Advisory Committee to not go backwards and have to come back and prove what was done was real-time editing. We do this for your benefit and the public's benefit, and what's being watched publicly, live, is creating town ordinances, which is law. And so this is part of the transparency process. The lady this evening said that she had given me questions after one of the meetings last October. I don't recall that. I try my best to answer any questions, and when necessary, get legal help to answer those questions. So if that person happens to be listening, I'm sorry if there was some miscommunication, and I would encourage her to provide me with any questions, and that's always the case after these meetings, that's my job. So, also, for clarification, if you recall, we, when we were processing the 50 acres on Manor Drive, the house, and you, in your wisdom, because we got it to the Open Space Committee kind of late, said, you know, even though you were acting on it and you passed it, you said you want the owner to go. That's going to happen next Tuesday, I'm going to be attending, and we do have a legal opinion on the settlement agreement that I will be reporting to the Open Space Committee on, and that is basically that the agreement is passe, it's expired, it's moot, and it was processed properly with regards to 50 acre entitled for one house with a second unit. That's it, there's no requirements left over, the settlement agreement is gone, it expired long ago. I will explain that to the Open Space Committee on Tuesday night. With regards to the list in the appendix of the general plan with those parcels that are sensitive to the Open Space Committee and the wishes of the town through the Open Space Committee to do what they can to preserve them, the open space element in the general plan reads as follows. Policy OS 1.4.1, "Any proposed development of a parcel in the inventory shall be reviewed by the Fairfax Open Space Committee." And the program to implement that policy was OS 1.4.1.1. Fairfax Planning and Building Services shall inform applicants proposing development of parcels in the inventory that their application will be reviewed by the Open Space Committee. Planning and Building Services will further encourage the applicant to contact the Open Space Committee before submitting their application, and the Open Space Committee shall make a good faith attempt to meet with the applicant to discuss their application. And then it goes on to say, on Program OS 1.4.1.2, "Fairfax Open Space Committee shall review each application for development of parcels in the inventory and provide a written evaluation to the appropriate Planning and Building Services Department. The evaluation shall be delivered before the end of the planning department's 30-day response window." And as you pointed out, Commissioner Newton, it doesn't, it's not always possible for the Open Space Committee not being staffed and with some changes in the membership to function that fast at this point. Linda's, I sent her home because she's here since 7:00 this morning, she has devised a system in her bookkeeping and records where all the parcels on the inventory list and the appendix of the general plan for the open space element are now on her master book of sites, so when we get an application in, it pops up in her mind's eye. So we, it'll be harder for any oversight when an application comes in, and as we've tried to do with the wall property or really sensitive sites, even before we get the application, we give the applicant a heads up. And I think we went through an exercise right after the adoption of the general plan, as stipulated in that first one, to send out letters to the owners of the parcels, so they were notified. And it might be a good idea to do that periodically, because then the owner, when the ownership changed his hands. So Linda's, unfortunately, not here to tell you exactly her system, but I'm satisfied that she created the system, just wanted to revisit the policy, and I will be going on Tuesday to help walk through what happened with Manor, to apologize that it got to them late. And then, just so you know, the application for the church project that we did get in, that we sent an incomplete letter out last Friday at the deadline, and met yesterday to go through it at Infinitum. Actually, the fire has lagged, fire is overworked right now because they have a staff member that broke a leg and they're behind on things, so we will be getting their comments in, as is my own building official behind because of this whole FEMA stuff that he's having to do. But it was routed, and a second item on their agenda, there may be more, but as I know, is the discussion of the residual 18 acres of the church project after they subdivide the two acres and we rezone it Plan Development District, and the residual 18 acres, which they are in their tentative parcel map, going to divide in half because it's UR7 and it would allow two houses, it was minimum seven unit lots, and part of their pro forma with their lenders is to get the residual value out of the land to make the project work. They, I believe you know, have offered it up for, last I heard, at some of $300,000, which is very reasonable. So if the Open Space Committee can do magic and find some funds, who knows, we might end up with yet more property in open space for perpetuity, either through ownership or, in this case, ownership and with the wall property, let's hope it through open space easements. So that's an example of how it's working right. And we didn't lose anything on Manor, there was no implications from the settlement agreement.
I have a comment. I had, you know, Norma was the one who asked for sort of a briefing, an explanation of the role of the Open Space Committee vis-à-vis the general plan, and she's not here now. Excuse me. And I would ask through the chair that in some upcoming meeting, maybe at the beginning, kind of like what we did with the water workshops, if I might be able...
Great.
...to flesh out a little bit more about both the open space and the conservation elements, and how I, you know, sort of have a bigger picture than just kind of reading one or two goals or policies to kind of provide information to the Planning Commission because I was involved in the development of those elements, so I have a fairly good understanding of them, and I would like to share that with you guys, so...
And if you all concur, I'll try to remember that, and please, if you could remind me, because the hour's late and there's so much going on right now, I'll try to remember. And I did remember to talk with the town manager about your request for staffing the Open Space Committee. I'm afraid that we're so stretched, but I did my part in bringing it up, so I would recommend take that one above my pay grade from here on.
I love that idea. And I'd also like to reiterate again that we do that, or I don't know how, build it in as a regular thing, of like, you have 10 or 15 minutes before each Planning Commission meeting, we are recording them, people do watch them, to hit on key, we heard a lot about getting people up to speed in informational stuff, and I think it might be really helpful to take that 10 or 15 minutes on a 101 topic, on maybe land use, or the density bonus regulations at the state, or, you know, things that could be really helpful for people to have, and then if there was a way on our website of saying, "Hey, if you want to learn more about graywater, click here," and you can watch the video of just the graywater thing, "if you want to learn more about the state density bonus law, click here and you can watch it." Or if you do something on the land, you know, the open space part of the general element, click here, so people can, you know, do bite-sized learning.
So, let me just finish my report, you guys are in your commission comments and requests, which is great. But let me just also make the announcement that, yes, the second workshop for creating a town center plan has been postponed from August 6th to October 1st. And we were in touch with a gentleman who had completed the downtown Berkeley plan, he's worked at all levels of development in the rural area, but the council asked us to go interview Marin County firms that could handle this type of design and facilitation work and get an estimate from them, and it's really gonna be close, but they want us to bring back, you know, a synopsis of that outreach on August 6th, I'm sorry, on August, on their meeting on August 3rd. So I'm a little bit overloaded right now with what's going on, but I'm trying to find some firms. I've got two to target, and I'll be showing them our adopted work program and also the list of opportunities and problems, or issues and opportunities, and trying to get just a statement of qualification from them, their fee schedule, and a ballpark on what they thought would be involved hours-wise. And this doesn't mean that the gentleman from Berkeley won't eventually be involved, but we just, they wanted to spend locally if possible, even though this is a very special skill set, and they also wanted to err on the side of showing the public what was going on, even though it was under the $15,000 limit that is supposedly the purview of the staff to manage, so I just wanted to, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Do you have a time for the workshop? Is it a daytime thing?
Thank you. I think, they, it went from six to three hours, and then the discussion was, no, it should be four, so I think it's nine to one at this point on October 1st. And by the way, I just heard from somebody today on the phone that there's some big event on October 1st, like Fill Your Bellies or something?
Fill Your Belly Farm, they're, they're totally on the lot, they're in the lot there, that is where they farm and sell themselves.
Right.
So, it's the first Saturday, October.
Right, so I would encourage that person that now is here to speak up to council on August 3rd if you wanted to massage that date, but I'll tell you, it's a nightmare getting a date that doesn't avoid religious holidays, other events, and that the people can make. So it's, I would say, we really should err on the side of more workshops so that when someone can't miss, can't make one, they can at least make the other. And the other thing is that the workshops are available to be watched online live, or watch the recording, and that your comments are always welcome along that whole process.
I want to add my quick comment that I totally want to hear more about open space, and I think that's a great idea. That's the essence of our town, I think, is the open space, so yes.
Yeah, and you know, the council has a presentation slot at the beginning, which just sounds like what you want. I would just encourage you to keep it to one presentation a meeting.
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all so much.[1761.04]